Good evening. Calling the March 12, 2024, Regular Town Council Committee of the Hall Meeting to Order at 6:32. Everybody is present except for Councilor Pacino, who said he would be late, and Councilor Merritt, who has some personal issues going on that he's been taking care of, and we are awaiting his return. On to Calendar and Communications, Councilor Bordalyn.
Thank you. First, I just want to congratulate the Fitch High School Cheerleaders on their second big win. I had a lot of communications about different things happening within the town as far as from short-term rentals to vacant properties, some communications regarding crosswalks in the city. I also attended the three-on-three discussion with Rhodes, I think I'm saying it correctly, with myself, Gajewski, and Jones. It was pretty, I mean, it was just a basic overview of what they were requesting. Let's see, I think that's all I have. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also had various communications regarding the school properties that we discussed recently, or there was the meeting on, and concerns about keeping trees, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended, along with Councilor Bordalyn and Councilor Gajewski, the three-on-three meeting with the Public Works in the City. That was very good. That was on Saturday. I wanted to just highlight, I'm on the Chairman of the Personnel Appointments Board, and I just wanted to highlight, we have nobody applying for any position this month, so I just want to highlight some of the vacancies that we have. This is, these are important positions in the city, or in the town, for different agencies, boards, and commissions, and we rely on volunteers to come forward and be part of those different agencies. If anybody is interested in being on this, you can visit the Town Clerk's Office, and they will show you what's available. You can also go onto our town website, my government boards and commissions, and there's a PDF you can download and fill out. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of them that are available. We have vacancies on the Beautification Committee, the Board of Assessment Appeals, Board of Code, Board of Appeals, Citizens and Police Committee. We have some on the Economic Development Commission, the Ethics Commission, the Fair Rent Commission, Historic District Commission. Some of these are for alternates, and some are actual, for regular members. We have some on Neighborhood Revitalization Zone, Golf Advisory Board, Performing Arts Commission. You can talk to Councilor Gajewski, who is the chairman of that, looking for members for that. Permanent School Building Committee, Planning Zone Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, Resiliency Sustainability Task Force, Water Pollution Control Authority, and Zoning Board of Appeals. So, we appreciate and love all citizens who come forward and join different boards and commissions and agencies, and there's lots of opportunities to get involved with your community. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Also had several emails, as other councilors have mentioned, regarding the budgets and vacant properties and so forth. Did attend, participated in the Rules and Procedure Meeting last Wednesday, the 6th, and also was involved with the CCM Legislative Meeting on Thursday, the 7th, which the focus was on pure. I unfortunately did not bring my notes to that meeting with me today, but I'll bring them next meeting to give an update on what was said there and presented. So, that's about all for the past week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to piggyback off what Councilor Jones said before I get into my full report, but the Performing Arts Commission is looking for members. We do not have a quorum right now, so we do need somebody to step up, hopefully, and join the commission. I'm willing to work with anyone. So, I encourage people to apply for that. And then, this Saturday, as Councilor Bordalyn and Councilor Jones stated it, I attended the Groton City Highway Department Budget Discussion. Something I want to highlight is on their budget. They're only up $25,000 in the past two years, which I think is pretty impressive, based on the inflation. And then Saturday afternoon, Councilor Jones and I, we walked the vacant school properties that we've all been getting communications about, just to give ourselves a better idea of what is on those lands, what could be used, et cetera. And then, Children First Groton will be holding a community cafe tomorrow at the Community Center from 5:30 to 7:00. Light dinner will be served, and childcare for the first 25 children that are registered will be provided, and the topic for that is mental health. That is all for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Councilor McBride stated, we did have our meeting, and that will be discussed at the first meeting, Town Council meeting. I also want to point out, I did receive communications similar to everyone else, but I also had someone come up to me today regarding text messages, email messages during our meetings, and that it is FOI-able, and it is one of our rules not to have communications going back and forth, especially with the town councilors, or any other, I should put, any other elected official going back and forth to, for our items discussed on that evening. So, I just wanted to remind everyone about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Pacino arrived at 6:37. Do you have any communications?
I do not. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you. I had various communications, I believe most all the councilors did, regarding Groton Heights, the Groton Public Library, regarding their budget. Former Mayor Mr. Spleen's 100th Birthday is coming up, with a celebration on March 16 at St. Mark's and Mystic, and Councilor Parker will attend representing the council by writing a town proclamation. Thank you. And then, the council was briefed about a clogged drain, which is exiting Quonic Plains, and has resulted in much surface water down there. So, just to let the community know that hopefully that's going to get taken care of in the next week or so.
Just to mention that is a DOT, and they do plan on bringing a truck down to do that.
Great. So, when people are wondering why there's so much water there, there's a slight issue, and they're going to be taking care of that. I attended the Athletic Fields Task Force, which passed a motion to go forward, and actually, Councilor Bordalyn was there as well, to go forward with some particular plans and using, as well as plans that were produced by the Board of Ed for the Field House. And they said that there's going to be many decisions that will be made in the upcoming months. Kent Frost and Castile Booze were awarded the contracts with a two-phase approach, and the results should be expected in about nine months. And that should cover some of the pricing on having fields at some of these locations that have been discussed. I watched the Rules Committee, attended the USS Groton Sail Board Meeting. I would, let's see, the other, yesterday, with all the wind, I was driving down Route 1, going to be turning onto Judson Avenue, and a tree fell across the street. That is an area that I had been in contact with the town manager, because it is state property. There are many trees there that are, seem to be dead. And the town, it looked like the state had come and cleaned a bunch of them out, but I think they might have a little bit more work to do. And also, congratulations to the Fitch Cheerleaders, who won their state champion for the second year in a row. Congratulations. And that's all I have for today. So, we'll move on to Approval of Minutes. Councilor Parker, would you like to move?
I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Hall Meeting Minutes of February 13, 2024, and February 27, 2024. I so moved.
Second, Bordalyn? Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordalyn. Does anybody have anything that they would like to know? All right. I have on our packet page three, which is the Minutes, page one. Just that, they have Erin McBride's name as A-A-R-O-N. It's actually E-R-I-N. Not a big deal, but just wanted to see if we can get that corrected. Councilor Rusk?
I don't know if this matters, but it is listed as a hybrid meeting, and I believe that was the one with the snowstorm, or the ice, and we were all virtual. I think that was only a virtual meeting.
Where does it say that?
Right here at the top.
Okay. Anything else? All right. All in favor of passing the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. That passes eight to zero to zero. Up next is new business. So, we have 2024-225, the Groton Housing Authority Update, and we have members from the Groton Housing Authority here. Would you like to come on up?
Sure.
And once you're all seated and organized, would you just go around and introduce yourselves?
Pardon me, ma'am.
Once you're all seated and organized, would you go around and introduce yourselves?
Absolutely.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, we're happy to be here. My name is Bob Frank. I'm the Chair, the Groton Housing Authority. And with me tonight is Nancy Codyann, the Vice Chair, Denise Tavarez, our Treasurer, Karen Hatcher is our newest member, Charlotte Cookson is our Tenant Commissioner. Charlotte lives in Pequot Village. And Robert Capoletti is our Executive Director. So, we're happy to be here, and thank you for putting us on first. Appreciate that. Oh. Yeah. She's a, right. Jamie Lee is our, we're going to talk about her later. She's our property manager. Yeah, we're going to bring her up there. Sorry. Yeah.
We're going to wait for her to leave first, so we can talk about her.
She's supposed to be down the hall in Planning and Zoning Meeting, which we're going to talk about tonight, too. We've got something exciting going on in there. So, she's here mainly for that. So...
All right. Well, welcome.
Okay. Sorry, Jamie. Sorry. All right. So, let's go to the first slide. This is what we want to cover tonight. We're excited about our modernization efforts, and we want to spend a little time talking about explaining affordable housing. You get there?
Yeah, it's not working. Are you close enough to it?
Let me see.
I'm fired, all right?
I'll lose.
There it is.
That's me.
That's it. That's the advanced. The right. The right is advanced. Yeah. Okay. It's not always like this. So, we've been around for a while. Oh, this is our, yeah, this is what we're going to talk about. Right. Okay. So, we're excited about the sustainable, the modernization effort, and we're going to talk a little bit about affordable housing. So, okay, if we can move on. Great. Right. So, we've been around for a while as an institution. Two state agencies provide oversight and the rules we operate under. Commissioner is appointed by you for a five-year term. One commissioner must be a tenant resident. Our most important asset is our staff of three. They are critical to our success. Jamie, the property manager, takes care of leasing, background checks, and manages maintenance, landscaping, and snow removal services. Since issues can occur off hours, it's a 24/7 job. Sharon works with tenants to connect them with social services as needed. We'll talk more about her later. Since we have a small staff, the shared service agreement with the Meriden Housing Authority is a great arrangement where we get our executive leadership, as well as a variety of support as needed. For example, the MHA staff helps us draft up RFPs and contracts, for example. Recently, we had the short-term need for an IT person that Meriden provided to us. So, this agreement has worked out really well for us. Okay. Let's go to the next. Oh, you got it. Okay. Backup. Backup. Thank you. So, our mission statement. "We operate and develop housing units to acceptable standards at affordable costs with increasing and less subsidy, while promoting social inclusiveness and providing the basis for independence." And the basis part is, we really do the bricks and mortar of independent living. And we'll talk a little bit more about our social service partners. Okay. Let's move on to, these are our three primary areas of operation. No surprises here. In the first two, we rent and maintain apartments. We modernize them, what we have to sustainable standards. But we also develop new housing units. On top, those are our demographics. So, 62, seniors 62 over or disabled, low and moderate income, 30 to 52K. Rents range from $375 to $650 a month. We'll talk a little bit more about that. We have 164 residents about now, and 59 are on state rental assistance. Regarding modernization, we're going to talk a little more about Grasso in just a bit. That house image shows the components of passive house design. Passive house design is a part of our Sustainable Development Strategy. Rob can fill us in on what passive house design entails during Q and A, if you're interested. For new developments, we've got 51 new affordable units on the drawing boards on property we own adjacent to Grasso. We expressed an interest in doing something, the S.P. Butler Property, back in November. And as some of you may recall, we submitted a proposal for the Mystic Education Center back in 2018. So, that's a quick look at who we are and what we do at high level. Nancy's now going to take us through our properties.
If you're not familiar already, these are our two properties, Pequot Village and Grasso Gardens. Pequot is on Quonic Road, and it was, it's approximately 55 years...
Excuse me. Can you speak into the microphone?
55 years old, am I on? Is that okay?
Thank you.
Sure. Grasso is about 43 years old, on the right. And so, these are our two campuses, I call them. And they're aging, as I am. Okay. So, again, acceptable standards at affordable costs. We provide apartments that are about 340 to 685 square feet. The 685 are the newest apartments that we have at Pequot. These include kitchen appliances and bathrooms with walk-in showers, electric heat pumps, and we provide the heat and AC. The residents pay for their own electricity. Water and sewer are included in the rent. And there is at least a one-year waitlist, if not longer, and this continues. There's a picture of a typical kitchen, very efficient. We also have community centers, and on each of the properties, they're comfortable, there's seating, there's, there are tables, books, large screen TVs. Kitchens, the residents enjoy bingo and holiday festivities. They have family gatherings. It's just a nice, comfortable meeting place for them. And we also partner with Thrive 55 and Library with a lot of programs, which is wonderful as well. So, that social inclusiveness is a priority for us. And social services, we partner with as many social services as we can. Our Resident Service Coordinator, Sharon Denofeu, assists residents who need assistance as well. With any of the social service partners we have, as you can see, Groton Human Services is at the very top of the list, Thrive 55, and so on. So, it's quite a long list of partners that we have that we use. So, this is our new, modern Pequot Village passive house project that we are so proud of. Two new buildings, eight apartments each. They came online in 2021. The apartments are, these are the 685 square foot apartments, twice the size of the old apartments that our residents are living in. Geothermal heating and cooling, solar roofing, R35, R30 insulation, LED lighting, Energy Star appliances, low water use plumbing. These apartments are the beginning of what we would like to do with approaching our goal of net-zero carbon footprints. So, we hope to replicate this and expand on it at Pequot, as well as Grasso. We're very proud of our accomplishment, and we hope that if you haven't visited these two campuses, that you will call the Housing Authority and set a date and come and tour one or both. This is just a rendering of the size of the apartments at Pequot. They're light, they're bright, they're spacious in comparison to the older units. So, that's where we're at with our passive house project interior.
Okay. Moving on, is this okay? Moving on to the modernization of Grasso. All the buildings, all the existing buildings will be torn down in four phases. We're going to do the best we can to repurpose materials. The residents that are affected, most of them have already been relocated. Jamie's done a great job in doing that. We've got about three or four residents left to relocate on the first phase. It's going to remain low and moderate income, age-restricted or disabled, no change to that. And we'll get to a Pequot Village rehab that after Grasso is complete. So, let's take a look. This is a current building at Grasso. It's Texture 111 siding. It's a low insulation rating. And that maple tree there, the roots, for sure, are a threat to underground sewer pipes. We have constant problems with root incursion in sewer pipes. So, that's what it looks like today. So, here's where we're going tomorrow. This is Crosskey Architects out of Hartford. Their renderings of these single-story, single-level buildings, there'll be 13 of those. And you can see the, again, the energy-saving features, the low-carbon footprint features we're going to put in. We're pretty excited by this, that there will be different architectural looks. We had a resident who was worried that when we were done, it was going to look like an army barracks. So, I think we're going to meet his expectations. So, moving on, this is a typical floor plan. I guess you can see, we don't need the laser, but there's a, you walk into the living room area, there's a kitchen, dinette, there's a bedroom, there's a bathroom, and there's a space for washer dryer. So, that's, that's just a quick look at, and Crosskey, the architects, they do work for CHAFRA around the state, so they're, they understand aging in place, design for aging in place, and that sort of thing. This is sort of a surprise. This is a multi-level, three-level building that if you're, that's on Newtown Road, so that street here to the left, where you can just see the edge of the car.
Want me to go up there?
Well, that's, no, that's all right. That's the edge of the road. Just to the left of that is the ambulance garage, just to locate that. And if you're in that car, looking out the window, that's the view you get from over there. So, it's going to be 24 apartments, and, you know, community room, outdoor patios. We'll have a small maintenance shop. And, you know, we had to go vertical here, because we really need additional apartments. We've got that one-year-plus waiting list, and we're land-constricted, so we really needed to go up to get, to get more apartments. Okay. Permitting is in progress, and I do mean, when we say Planning and Zoning is currently reviewing, as I said, they are right now reviewing it. We expect them to approve it tonight, our plan. We're going to break ground for Phase 1 in the fourth quarter of this year, and complete Phase 4 sometime in 2026. So, we're really super excited by this. It's been a year and a half to two years in the planning phase, and so now, Rob, you're going to do the explaining of...
Sure. So, just to explain, the newer vertical building that Bob described, add 20 more units to our development. I think that's really important to understand. And going through the process, we were thinking that it was a rehab of an old development, and because of the extensive development, it's actually considered a new project. We'll talk a little bit about some of the discoveries, because it's a new project, that we have to do with new zoning rules and wetlands and stuff like that. So, these projects are very expensive. I don't want to shock people. But picture what's there now. If you look behind you and imagine in front of your, I guess it's the counter, the...
Dais.
Dais. That's about 10 feet, and then the building's about 30 feet long. That's all the residents currently have now. So, think of living in a 340-square-foot unit. Pretty, pretty small. So, here, we're adding double that size to make it more accommodating for residents to meet their expectations, visitors, family. As, of course, as people live longer, they want to entertain more, and you can't do that in a closet, and it's really like a closet. So, we had to up our game, make it more marketable for our residents and more livable. And we also did that by using sustainable materials and energy improvements, which are critical to our residents who pay utilities and also for the environment. And we're very considerate about the environment concern, you know, what our energy uses is going to do to the environment, what our water runoff is, we can use rain gardens, that sort of stuff. The point is, it's very expensive to do that. These buildings are around, each unit is about $450,000 to $500,000 per unit. Now, I don't want to shock you, but it has these sustainable improvements and the fact that we have to build to the CHAFRA and DOA Department of Housing standards. So, that also increases the cost, because we're using the best products, the longest-lasting materials, and then we also pay wages that are prevailing wages or David Spade and Waverly, depending on the funding source. How do we, how does an affordable housing project pay for a building like that? Well, there's a couple of new tools out there. The old tool we use is bonding way, we bond for the project, which is really a construction loan, and then we have to pay for it after it's done. And then, we get funding from the state or federal government to fill the gap. That was good when the buildings used to cost about half what they cost nowadays. So, we now have to look at other resources. Now, I know the council's been hearing about the ARPA funds, the various other programs the state and federal government's put out for... the state and federal government's put out for community improvements. Some of those we can use here, but they also come with a lot of strings and are difficult to get in some cases, or they're competitive. But there's also something called the IRA bill, which has really focuses on building improvements and energy improvements. And so building a project of this size, using all the energy improvements and sustainable design that we're doing, about forty-eight to fifty percent of that construction cost will come back in a tax credit. Now, one would say, well, how's a housing authority going to use a tax credit? Well, somewhere in their infinite wisdom, the government had the idea of, let's let nonprofits and housing authorities and other municipalities get a rebate back from the federal government. So that really saved a lot of opportunity, created a lot of opportunity and saved a lot of time for small housing authorities like us or nonprofits who are trying to improve their communities and build more affordable housing, because now there's another source of income that they don't have to pay back, that don't come with a lot of strings, and they're making you build a better. So that's really the way that these projects, and you'll hear some of our future projects towards the end of the presentation, that's how we're able to do this. And then, of course, one of the projects we'll talk to later, the town helped us apply for a grant, which we did get, which is three point five million.
Make the point.
The cost.
Each apartment.
Each apartment is four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars. So that's really important to understand.
Well, you saw those other two blurbs from the day, the quotes from the day, and how expensive things are. The Chelsea Groton Bank headquarters downtown doubled in cost. The, you know, Lime, the savings, the bids on the senior center came in a million dollars over. So that's the world we're in.
I also want to add that applying for and getting these tax credits and other programs is a full-time career in and of itself. So I thank the board for participating and helping us search for those kinds of programs, start applying for those programs, and we really work all together to do that. With just a two-person staff and a five-person board, everybody pitches in to apply for these programs and get the grants and funds for these.
I think it's important that everyone know how much we value Rob and the job that he does. We are so fortunate to have him here in Groton. I can't be kind to tell you that I don't think we would be where we are today without him. So that's my point.
So, to talk about, so we also have a second project. We were, for a long time, we were calling it Grasso Gardens Three. It happens to be four acres, parallel and, sorry, adjacent to or the back part of Grasso Gardens One and Two. Many people don't even know Grasso Gardens, but the first phase was built a few years before, half was built before the second back part was built a few years later. And now we're going to extend that through to a totally different style of a building, which will be another fifty-one units. Again, we're using bond funds and tax credits to do that. I think that project is about thirty-six to thirty-eight million dollars. But it is two larger buildings as opposed to many smaller buildings. It'll be an elevated building, three or four stories, depending on how we break out the ground. We're trying to use the earth to our advantage, because it's a little hilly, that property, so we'd like to put some walkouts. Forty-one units will rent at workforce income, so rates between fifty-one and eighty percent of the area median income. Ten of the units will be rented at low and moderate income rates, which is twenty-five to fifty percent of the area median income. Five of the units will be designated as age-restricted. So we're changing a little bit of the population that we serve in a new development. We get many referrals from residents looking to downsize or to move into affordable housing, and they don't qualify because either their income is a little too high or there's other circumstances that they may be not old enough to do that, or that they're not disabled. So we're trying to meet another goal in another population so that people can stay in Groton and work in Groton. The same sustainable features and all of our properties going forward, we'll always put as many sustainable energy features as we can. Even the materials used, like hardy plank siding, which is like a concrete or fiberboard siding, so it doesn't rot, it'll get bugs, it's much stronger and lasts a lot longer. The geothermal and solar roof are very important. Geothermal, our wells that we drill in the ground, three to four hundred feet, we put a pipe in the ground that'll last four hundred years, and we circulate water like the radiator of your car, using the energy from the earth. Sustainable roofing, which is solar shingles built into a roof. So the roof, and you can take a drive-by, Pequot Village, and see the new buildings. You don't even really know that it's a solar roof. Those shingles will last a hundred years. The solar panels in those shingles will last at least twenty-five years and slowly degrade over time. Hopefully, in twenty-five years, we'll figure out something else we can use to improve those. The, that project has a three point five million dollars of the state challenge grant funds that we received, and the town graciously invited us to apply for that with them, and we were granted that, so we're excited to get that moving. And we think to start to construction the first quarter of next year, provided the second career that we've created for ourselves of applying for all these funds comes through as we expect.
Okay.
Oh. We've done this before at other years. We're on to the, my pocket neighborhood design of using smaller houses in a pocket neighborhood, a cottage community. It is, Groton zoning regs cover it as a cottage community. You can see basically all of the things that are the components of it. It is, I think it's a dream that we all have as a board, I hope, and Cher, we are looking forward perhaps to the Butler property and proposing something there. Again, it's for, it's for young families, affordable housing for young families with children, with, for seniors who are downsizing, who want to just move out of their big houses and get into a small community like this. I see something like courtyards and orchards and just community center. Trees, lots of trees will be planted around this. And anyway, it's for entry-level home buyers and downsizing seniors. And we're kind of excited about this, and hopefully we can bring more to the table eventually.
Okay. So switching gears to, this is a slide as an attempt to explain affordable housing in a graphical way. Here, affordability is defined by comparing annual income to the median and getting a percentage of that median, then pricing the rents at thirty percent of the income. So here, seventy-six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars a year is the area median income for a single person in Groton, as per HUD data. Those horizontal lines represent where we are today, the GHA, low and moderate income, Pequot Village and Grasso Gardens, age restricted, disabled. We operate between thirty-eight and sixty-six percent of AMI. The new apartments, the Ridge View apartments that Rob just talked about, will be from fifty to eighty and from twenty-five to fifty, fifty-one to eighty. And you can see the folks, the skills and career paths that will be filling those places. Okay. We can go to the next slide. And just to put a cap on it, these are some of the skills that are critical to a vibrant and healthy community. They're really important for providing a lot of services and help we take for granted. The quote from the day says it all. We agree with that. I hope this is, I hope this helps in understanding what affordable housing means in terms that are familiar to us. Okay. So how can we work together? Be of goodwill towards the GHA and affordable housing. Goodwill can be priceless. Help us reduce ongoing municipal expenses where possible. Staff support has been tremendous, we need to sustain it. And most important to me, anyway, if it's not too late, start saving land for affordable housing and housing in general, and include us when you can in your housing, in your land use decisions going forward. So with that, we'll take questions. Is there anyone?
Counselor Portlin.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for the very thorough presentation. I just want to say these are many things I'm passionate about, is making sure that people, low income and affordable housing are kind of, you know, some people don't realize that they're two different things, but making sure that they have the right quality housing is just as important as, for everyone, equally across the town. It's also my passion is, you know, serving our community with people with disabilities, as well as some of our veterans that end up living in these housings, people with mental illness and so forth and so on. It's, you know, also a passion of mine that people can be proud about where they live. And we saw those disparities during COVID, when folks had to introduce their home for the first time, on camber, during school, things like that, when some people, you know, could separate from different places. I think the work that you guys do is very vital to our town. It allows people at any point, at any point in their life that become ill and fall on hardships, like one cancer diagnosis, one, you know, not everyone's making two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Some people may wipe out their savings with one critical illness, one widowed woman or husband, vice versa. Not having that dual income can put anybody in this lower income bracket in a pinch. It is important, as we look at Groton, as we look to develop and look at all these high-end homes and high-end apartments, that we look at, we're taking care of the needs of everybody in our community and allowing everyone to feel welcome. And I have heard time and time again that people are struggling to find affordable, quality housing within our community. One of the other passions that I did when I read this is the fact that you guys are doing sustainable stuff. That not only helps the taxpayer who's subsidizing the extras from the state level, but it also helps the electric bills for these folks in these apartments to be affordable. They're not like turning on the heat and having it go out the window. So you guys are looking at the big picture and really taking that initiative to make sure you're looking at green, sustainable longevity. It's not something we have to ask for, you're implementing that in. So I just want to thank you guys for doing that hard work upfront. I'm very passionate about our folks in our community that are not as fortunate as most of us that are around here. But having the accessibility and the areas in which they can live in a clean, proud area and have options is so important. I also like that you guys are collaboratively working, you know, getting the grants. So I just want to commend you for your hard work and your dedication to serving a community of folks in need. And it really makes our Groton a broader tapestry of a diverse community at large. I'm going to run out of time, but I just, you know, want to start there and say that. And I have definitely more I'll add to this. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Mr. Frank, thank you. I went last year through all the, took a very nice tour last year through all the properties, including the newest one, which was quite impressive in terms of size and just quality. Can you just, I just wanted to ask a little bit of questions about the cost. I think it was, you're as surprised as I. So how much more, if you were just building a regular house, or I guess comparing what you built to what might be somebody building a regular house, is it substantially more so that you cover all these different areas? Or can you sort of talk a little bit about that?
Rob, I can answer a little bit of that. So we're probably about thirty percent.
Can you bring the microphone forward? Thank you.
I have a big mouth, I thought you could always hear. So they're about thirty percent more expensive than if we were building it, if we weren't building it with the sustainable energy materials and looking at the environmental factors. More importantly, because we're a quasi-municipality and are subject to build the CHAFRA and DOH standards, we're building basically commercial-grade buildings because of that. So we can't build a typical home that you or I would build privately. We're making these buildings design, originally we were building them for fifty years, now they're lasting a hundred years. So the average home is built to last fifteen years before it needs major improvements. These buildings won't do that. The heat pumps that we used to use were eight- to ten-year heat pumps. Heat pumps that we're using now last forty to fifty years. In fact, the only reason why they say forty to fifty years is because they haven't been around that long to know if they're going to die or not, so it could be longer. The solar panels, even though the solar panels degrade over time, the materials used will last for a hundred years. Solid surface countertops, hardwood flooring or luxury vinyl, I think you saw some of that in the other units. So we're using materials that we won't have to put the capital improvements and capital funds into in year fifteen, in year ten, in year twenty, because we don't have it. So if we don't build it right now, it'll fall apart and start to age faster in those years, as you can see from our T-one-eleven units. In some of those cases, we've been replacing the wood faster than we can buy it. And so the sustainable, the upfront cost lasts much longer, and our buildings will last much longer and be of quality because of that. So it does cost a lot more because of that. And also, it's the board's desire to build developments like this that will outlast us, that will serve the residents' needs much more than our older units did, and that would also put some little bit more money in their pocket and create a little bit more pride in their neighborhoods.
Are the rents that you charge, are they able to cover the bond costs and things that you have?
No. No, so that's why we use the tax credits, and then we have to find other sources. So whatever grants are available, we reach out for those, the private funds, the public funds that are out there. And that brings in enough to build the properties. And the hope is that we put all this money out front now, and we can afford to build it and pay for it over forty, fifty years, and that we won't have to put extra capital out through those phases of a typical construction process, you know.
So the buildings that you're replacing now, that you're going to, the four phases that you're going to do, you're going to tear those down and replace them. Is that, was money put aside to kind of build those again? Or how are you affording to replace those buildings?
So we issued bonds, and so a housing authority bond is more like a construction loan. So they give us all of the funds upfront to build it, knowing that it can't pay for it at the end of the day. And then we have a package that takes out the tax credits, and it reduces the cost enough so that our tenants can afford it. We did receive some RAP subsidy. RAP subsidy is like a Section Eight subsidy, but from the state of Connecticut.
That's rental assistance, rental assistance payments.
Okay. That comes from the state, right?
Comes from the state. Actually, federal dollars issued to the state, issued to the housing authorities for these particular tenants. So what happens there is that those tenants who are very low income, as the rents creep up, they'll be protected. They won't become homeless, they won't lose their housing. Even affordable housing has to be able to pay the bills.
So the new one that you're building, the forty-four, let's find the right page, forty-four million, that's, oh, that's the rehab.
That's the rehab.
That's the rehab.
So even though it's a rehab, we're really knocking them all down, even taking these slab foundations out and moving them a little bit. We had to do that to fit them on the property, so we had to really kind of move everything. And also, the infrastructure of the development is collapsing. The water line's a sewer line, so everything has to be rebuilt. And then with the new codes, we have to put in these very large underground water retention systems, which we're not exactly happy about, but there's going to be these massive, almost like leach fields that hold water and slowly.
Well, it's not a leach field, they've got sealed underneath, they've got a liner. One of them's two hundred feet long, sixty feet wide, and about six feet deep. We're going to be excavating dirt out of there. I estimate over a hundred dump trucks taking it out. It's, that's, that's just to handle surface water by the current rules. We need these retention bases.
Kind of cost of.
Who knows?
I was, I was pretty impressed the last time, just taking a tour through there. I think your maintenance staff is pretty small, but it was the responsiveness of the building manager and to be on top of all the things. I thought that was, as they talked about how they dealt with mold, how they dealt with other issues. They seem to be, you know, by being extremely responsive, they could.
Basically, it's invaluable.
We have, we have a great staff.
Yeah, no, it was very obvious, or very evident, going through it and seeing the response of how, you know, a small staff that's really responsive can really do quite a bit of stuff. So if you, as you look forward to the next, your next project, what kind of size property are you sort of looking for if you are going to? are you sort of looking for if you are going to build more?
Well, we did make a, gave a list of ideas, or a set of ideas for the S.B. Butler property. And we're here, John knows our number, you know our number, we're here to help. We want to work with you, cooperate with you on developing town, as Counselor Portelin said, the kind of housing she's talking about is what we're interested in.
Okay. So something like that size, nine acres or something is something, a nine-acre-ish size is a good size for you?
No, that's fine, we can do that.
That's fine.
Our two properties now are around 25 acres, but they're spread out in a ranch style. So as we develop housing for other demographics, like younger families, or believe it or not, as people are aging out of their larger homes, they're not necessarily 62 years old, they're like in their 50s. And so they'd like the housing, and they want to stay in the community they grew up in. So they can't do that if we don't build housing that's in that middle income that Bob and Nancy discussed. I think the other nice thing about working with the Housing Authority is that we're a community agency, we're here forever, we're not going anywhere. And the income that we earn, we put right back into the community. As like other developers, they have to make a profit, we're not here to make a profit. Whatever we make goes back into the developments. And so we created a structure that all these little developments will generate a little bit more income, so we can put it aside for either the next project or capital improvements 20, 30 years down the road. So we don't have to keep going back and asking for money.
Because part of our mission statement is to have less subsidies going forward, so.
Kind of gradually weed yourself down off of them. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Rusk. Good evening. Thank you so much for coming tonight and giving us so much information. I truly appreciate it and what you do. I work a lot with what we call the Alice population with United Way, which is your 80% of your median income, that type of range. So I'm really excited to see the fact that you're looking at cottage communities, because we really do have a population in Groton that needs that, you know, whether it's the younger population or the people who are looking to downsize. Groton housing is not inexpensive, so I appreciate the fact that you're doing that. If I'm doing the math correctly, you started out with about 174 units before you started renovation. How much do you anticipate, without the cottage units, how much do you anticipate having at the end?
At Grasso Gardens, we're going to add 20 more units. And at the third one, or what we're calling Ridge View, we're probably going to change the name as the board starts arguing about what the name should be.
And it's an apartment complex, it's separate.
We get along fine until it comes to naming something.
And there'll be 51 units.
51 units, okay. And can you just kind of walk through that a little bit? You said there's 41 units that are workforce income, 10 units that are rented at lower moderate incomes, and then five that are age restricted. What does that mean?
Five out of 10, well, there'll be 62 or older.
Okay, thank you.
62 or older or disabled.
Thank you.
By social security rules.
And when you talk about cottage communities, would that be something that people would be renting or purchasing?
We're thinking purchasing.
Okay.
We'd like to put it on the tax base in the town of Groton, so that it's taxable.
There's a number of ways to approach it. I would say let the professionals work that out, and we can work out from our end what the community, you know, interests are.
We designed it so that depending on what we're building, it could be owned individually by families that want to live there. There could be some sort of community payment to make care, take care of the common areas, but all go back on the tax rolls. And again, it depends on what sources of funding we're using and how it works out. We could even provide mortgages at some point, low-interest rate mortgages over a longer term, because we're not, again, we're not making money off of these things, so we can stretch the dollars depending on what the rebates are out there. So as properties come up, and if there's an interest in the housing, we're going to look at it, we can design it for what the need is. And that's something that we can really do very easily, because we're not looking for money in our pocket.
Well, and thank you so much for making it sustainable. Not only is it great for the environment, it's great for your renter to not have to pay more than absolutely necessary, because we all see our electric bills and see the cost of those. Other than that, I don't have any other questions, I just want to say thank you so much for what you do, and I hope to come see you guys soon and take a tour. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have not done the cottage style yet, you're looking for property right now.
Right.
And we have a current process that we have to go through, so, Mr. Burt, how would that work?
Similar to their participation in the Mystic Ed Center, they would submit a bid at the proper time, following the process.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. So that we all be following the process, it's not that we're giving property, you want to be considered, but you have to go through the regular process to be considered. Thank you for this, very interesting, and considering I knew a few people that lived in both styles, one in Paquonic and at Grasso Gardens, and the spacing is wonderful, because it's tight for them. The project that you're looking to do, current project, you don't need anything from us currently, is that correct? That's why I'm asking.
We have a list.
There are a few things we could use.
We used to have a sewer, a deal with the town on a sewer bill, it was a, what do you call it?
Pilot.
Pilot, some kind of pilot program. And we opted out of it back when for reasons that aren't valid anymore. We could get back into a sewer bill, help us with our sewer bill, helps keep the rents down. You know, on permitting, we have, we know Groton, we don't have, we don't have a town fire department. If we did, we wouldn't be paying the fire marshal, the town fire marshal for sign off on the drawings that are in front of P&amp;Z right now, if we had a town fire department. We don't, we have fire districts. We have to pay the fire districts fees to look over our drawings and all that, which if it was a town fire department, we wouldn't do. And they're not cheap, to say the least. So I don't know, there's nothing really, I don't know what you could do there. We've had conversations with the fire district, and we end up writing a check. So I don't know, but that's just something we've done on our bucket list.
The town staff have been wonderful in helping us, suggestions and guiding us through. So I would love to see, you know, keep that relationship going, and they give us great ideas. Sometimes the ideas cost us more money, but it's still good ideas. But I think those are really important. The pilot agreement that Bob was talking about is a payment in lieu of tax, so the housing authorities enter into these agreements with their towns or cities in order to contribute back to the town, because we don't pay any taxes. We have low incomes, we can't charge market rates to pay a normal tax. So we ask for those pilot agreements, so that we can reduce on the other costs that are out there, like the water and sewer bills, like the fire district bills. Soft costs that we pay for that don't improve our buildings and don't help our residents. And those are things that I think the town could do without burdening the town or the taxpayer, if they could waive those, you know, staff to come out and inspect our units and review plans that are here anyway, right? So, you know, if they could help us. Well, we had some problems, I'll be honest with you, when we did Pequot the two model buildings, it held us up for about nine months, because we didn't have the money to pay the fire marshal to review the plans, do a fire safety review. So we had to figure out a way to do that, and we basically had to cut some of the project down and use the money instead of building. And that's a shame that we had to do that. That actually reduced the hardy plank siding down to vinyl siding, instead of hardy plank siding. So those are some of the things that the town could help us with that wouldn't hurt, you know, wouldn't hurt the town's pocket if they helped us with some of that.
And just the other thing I mentioned on the last slide is, you know, speak of affordable housing with goodwill towards it, you know, be an advocate with us, help us out with that. You know, we're trying to do architecturally pleasing, build houses that are sustainable, safe. You'd want us in your neighborhood, is what I'm saying.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first quick question is, how many people do you have on your waiting list right now?
There's about 42 people at the last check, but we get about that many inquiries every month that don't qualify for our waiting list, because of either their age or their income, or they're not disabled. So that's the reason why we would like to build more. And those 42 on the waiting list right now is about a year long. So that's how little our turnover is, and because we don't have that many units.
And then, you just mentioned units, so you are going to have 90 units at Grasso Gardens. You have 51 unit, will have 51 new units at Ridge View. How many do you have at Paquonic Village?
104.
It's Pequot Village, people confuse it with Paquonic Apartments sometimes.
Yeah.
Yes, Pequot Village.
So that's a total of 250, 45? If I just counted correct, that will be it, okay. And then my, my next question, more of a statement really, regarding the cottage communities. As a younger person, I would actually prefer, if that project ever does come to be, I would prefer you sell those communities. And the reason was that is, you had mentioned it earlier, with mortgage rates just being so high, and you know, maybe the housing authority offers the mortgage instead of a bank, and because a house is a ticket to the middle class, it is the biggest investment that many citizens have. Also, when it is being built into an existing neighborhood, if it is being built into an existing neighborhood, it makes them a part of their neighborhood and really deepens the community. So that would be, if that ever comes to be, that was, I would be in favor of and recommending that you do wherever that land may be, if it ever, hopefully it comes, but, so I just wanted to put that out there. And then I want to echo what Counselor Parker said on the S.B. Butler property, you would have to go through the process, through the RFP process, if it ever comes to the council of that. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I yield that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Portelin.
Yes, my first question is, doing my research when I served on the Property Use Committee along with Counselor McBride, one of the things is the relationship with other towns throughout other states and other municipalities, is this working relationship. I'm not saying for S.B. Butler in particular, because I can't speak to that, because I don't even know what the plans are, but to my understanding to the town manager, technically, a housing authority does not have to go through the RFP process. If we found some land somewhere in town, not saying S.B. Butler, but maybe somewhere, I don't know, all of a sudden we got 10 acres of land and we thought we could put something there, we can contact the housing authority and say, hey, we got this extra set of land, we want to negotiate with you guys first. Is that true? That's my understanding.
The town council reserves the right to basically do whatever they want. They do not have to follow the policy. It's written into the policy.
You go for it.
So what I'm saying is, it is an acceptable thing, and I've seen it in other towns, I did some reading, that towns work on that working relationship, and again, not saying S.B. Butler or any of our schools, but they might come into some land and they can say, hey, Groton Housing Authority, we think you guys would be a great asset to this. So there is ways that we can, if we chose to prioritize this, I just want to be clear. Not that, the current housing you guys have does not allow for women and children, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, but this new plan would allow for women and children?
Yes, it will. There are some two-bedroom units which we don't have right now.
Okay. That's something else I'm extremely passionate about after the heels of Branford Manor. One of the things outside of your, you know, your campuses, as I call them, there really is no other affordable housing complexes. We have 400-something units on the city side, mainly women and children, some families, and a lot of women had nowhere else to go. And they didn't want to leave their town and uproot their children out of their school district and what they were familiar with. And so I'd like that move to broadening to a plan to. But right now, there's such a short shortage. And when we look at other working relationships, we give outside developers like Branford Manor, we give them tax breaks, so I do think that we should find a way, I mean, they're getting a huge tax break for Branford Manor, and look at all the controversy. We, you know, so to the town manager, how would this look to work on these things with, I mean, plans that they're having to pay for and things like that? What can we do as a municipality, because they are helping our most vulnerable in our town, and we are giving outside developers tax breaks that then leave or destroy, you know, we don't know what's going to happen? So how can we work together with that?
At the same time, they were requesting to have those fees waived, the town had done the same thing. They were not approved at the time, we could always try again, but that's out of our control. That's the, you know, each individual fire department, fire board is in control of that. Matter of fact, when we dealt, we've dealt with things before in Paquonic Bridge, I know it's working right, and they can't give a break on that. So each one's different, for each fire department.
And how do we move forward with the sewer and other ways?
As a pilot, I know you had been working with the sewer, with the WPCA, and you withdrew the request, because I think they have to also sign off. So I don't know if you plan on resubmitting at some point?
Yes, yeah.
They had been working with them, and I think we're going to go back for more information or something, so that's really with them.
I'd like to add also, the town currently doesn't charge the housing authority to review the plans or for building permits, but there are other fees that the town doesn't, the formula for paying the, like, say, the fire safety review is based on the cost of the building permit. So the building permit, if it was zero, there should be zero for the fire safety permit, but it doesn't work that way, I guess.
They look at what it would have been if you were paying. We waive it, but the fire department in the past has not seen it the same way.
Okay, well, that definitely helps me understand. I just think that we should do everything we can when folks are trying to help our most vulnerable residents in our town. Again, I just can't thank you enough for the initiative and efforts to make this sustainable, affordable, approachable, and looking at ways to help everybody in our community stay and thrive here. My other question quickly, any other goals or anything else that you see coming on the horizon outside of this?
It's hard to answer, because we have a lot of aspirations about developing and building a model type of community, of which is not just for seniors, or not just for aging-out adults, but that is an all-inclusive community that creates as much energy as it uses, maybe it contributes back to the community, is built and such with materials that it could last, outlast the citizens in it, and last for years after that, and also create some sort of, using technology to our advantage, artificial intelligence for health and safety issues, using the rainwater to repurpose that, using energy and creating energy for the community, not just for the development. So we do have a lot of plans that we're playing with right now, but nothing to present, but maybe this time next year, when we get to speak with you again, we'll have a whole different conversation about that.
Well, I think it's just, it's great that you're looking outside the box, and I know that you do a lot with the gardens, bringing produce to the community as well. So again, thank you for your efforts, and I look forward to seeing what other initiatives come forward. Thank you.
Counselor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If in the future you're going to be having women and children, have you considered daycare?
Some of our larger thoughts, larger developments would do something like that. Now, daycare is actually, believe it or not, sustained themselves, once you build it, of course, but the running of it will sustain itself, because there's quite a bit of funding out there to help lower-income families support the daycare costs. And also, by building it and using the sustainable materials and the grants that we would get for it, it would reduce the cost, so there wouldn't be the overhead that others would have, there wouldn't be the rent, for example, that daycares have to pay now.
Is it in the plans, or is it just something you're thinking about?
So not this 50-unit one, but if we built a larger development that was a family-oriented, we could definitely look at that. You would need about a couple hundred units to support a daycare of about 12 to 20, depending on what size.
Well, I would imagine people from outside might be able to bring their children to the same daycare, as long as they qualify.
Yes, absolutely.
Whether they live there or not. I'm sorry?
We need the land to put it on.
Understood.
You heard that, I also run the Meriden Housing Authority, so some of our developments, there had care-for-kids types of programs on the sites for the residents there, and then if there was extra space, people from the outside could come in and use that as well. So it doesn't work very well.
And my last quick question with the three-level, new three-level buildings, nobody mentioned elevators.
They do have elevators, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just aside from our children, while we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, but grandchildren can come and stay with the grandparent for an extended period?
Yes, so it depends. Right now, the policy prohibits the overnight unless there's a plan for that.
It what?
It prohibits the overnight unless there's permission of a plan. But there's certainly quite a few grandparents on our developments that take care of the children during the daytime hours. And the reason why they usually don't stay is because the units are three-hundred square feet. Where are they going to sleep? Where are they going to run around? So in new developments, that would be addressed, and it would be much more conducive to younger people, children, grandparents watching their children.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Derek, can you just sort of describe the thing about the tax breaks? I didn't realize the fire departments, the fire districts have some control.
Yes, they do their own fire plan review to make sure, for safety reasons, separate from the town. And each fire district has their own rules on it, of course, so they usually have an ordinance in place on how it works. And in the past, we've tried to get those fees waived, but it hasn't worked.
So there's another question about just sort of tax breaks, the pilot funds and things. Is that also controlled by the?
That's the Water Pollution Control Authority, which I mentioned they had been working with them. Just recently, they withdrew the discussions, I think the intent is to come back at some point, but that's with them.
Okay.
And I think, you know, I think you met several times, so hopefully it'll be bringing back to them.
So we have?
So we're doing what the town proper can do.
So we have seven fire districts, we have seven sets of rules?
Seven different fees.
Seven, eight, nine. Okay. All right, let's, all right, thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How much property are you looking for?
How much do you have?
No, that's not what I asked. I want to, I want an answer from you, because it sounds like you're asking us to give you property, but we have some land that's developable. So it's going to be, yes, do more for you guys and the community, but we'll also need people to live in regular houses. So what is the amount that you're looking for?
So I think the easier way to answer that is, what is the town's needs for those properties that you're trying to redevelop? And if you had an idea, or the town council said, look, this property, we think this would be a better fit for the neighborhood, can the housing authority help us get to that goal? We can work together to get the funding, do the bonding, build it, and it could become home ownership. We don't have to necessarily own it at the end of the day, and we're a redevelopment agency in effect. We can build it for people to purchase those, and then we step out of it after that. I think the idea would be, is to, what does the neighborhood need? What is the town looking for? And we can do it.
Let's say a minimum of five acres, or something that, it has to be economically viable. Okay, so there is a minimum. But then you can go up to whatever the Mystic Education Site was.
That's not our property, so, not our property. They're safe, so.
Yeah, right, right. But I mean, if you're looking for size, that didn't bother us.
And to Bob's point, less than twelve units is very difficult to do a bond fund for, because it doesn't cost, it costs too little, and the bond's price, the soft cost on a bond is very expensive, thus, you know, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar-per-unit cost. So the soft cost for housing authorities like the town, when a town does a project with a lot of soft costs, engineering, planning, design going into that is required by regulations, same with the housing authority. There's a lot more planning going into that than building some one-person home type of thing. So twelve, I would say, less than twelve is very difficult to do with the type of funding that we have now.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so I have some questions. Well, I am delighted to see what's going on at Grasso Gardens. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, my grandmother Ruth had lived there, and it is very near and dear to my heart. And I completely understand how this assists families and to put loved ones in a very safe environment, and have them still have their independence and living on their own. And so I am a big fan. Thank you. We have ARPA funds for the sewer for Grasso Gardens. There is money earmarked. Currently, so for this year, we need to, I guess, pass something here, and it goes to the RTM. So my question is, will you have something prepared, written up, pricing, all those things that's going to come to the council this year for the, to get it assigned, and the vote on that?
Yes, we could absolutely do that. We've already costed out the whole project, we know what the breakdown is, we can certainly provide that, and put it in whatever format the town needs us to do that with.
All right. And then you're going to be able to have it spent by the end of 2026, is that correct?
One thing we can do is spend money very quickly.
Okay. Because we had to fit the criteria, and if you can't meet these deadlines, then we could do something else with the funding, and that's why I'm questioning. So there is interest in properties, for town properties, and let me ask you, because some people in our community think of Grotton Housing Authority, and I know you gave a great presentation here tonight, but can you tell the difference between what low-income is and what affordable workforce is? What the difference is in that?
They're probably saying, I mean, affordable is a scape. We say affordable in relation to, we did, I did tonight, by the median income. Okay, so are you eighty percent of that, are you sixty? Where are, what were those professions? That's the workforce. That's the workforce we're talking about. What are those professions that fit into those segments? So what was it, skilled trades? Teacher, municipal employees, CNAs, water bed, food service workers, on and on.
Right. And what I asked was, what's the difference between low-income and affordable?
So low-income and affordable housing is really the structure of how the funding came in and the population that it serves within that structure. What we really, the low-income is kind of not happening anymore, because the buildings can't, there's not enough federal dollars to build low-income housing anymore. So housing authorities have moved away from that, bringing in tax credit equity investors, who in theory actually own ninety-nine-point-nine percent of that project during the tax credit compliance period, which is like fifteen years. And after that, it reverts back to the housing authority structure. But also, affordable housing, the advantage of affordable housing is it doesn't follow the market rate to increase. So you've seen over, since COVID, for example, the rental market has skyrocketed, right? So affordable housing doesn't follow that trend. It keeps with the area median income for the families that need that housing, so they're only paying thirty, thirty-five percent of their income towards the housing, depends on if utilities are included or not. And they don't have to pay, don't have to get three jobs to afford their rent and utilities. And that's important to understand, that affordable housing stays affordable for the period that it's designed for. In most cases, it's forty to fifty years.
And that's basically between forty thousand and about sixty-three thousand, is what you're saying, your criteria here is, from the low and moderate income?
So we can go up to, with affordable housing, we can go up to eighty percent of the area median income. So they designed it that way, so that you could build to a family of four, for example, that has two incomes. They wouldn't be able to afford affordable housing, but they can't afford their own home yet. So they're in that, like, in-between income, so here they could. We could build, as Councilor Parker spoke about, we can build housing for that family, people in those categories and that income bracket, and they can stay there for as long as their income is within that bracket.
Okay.
And if we sell it, they can stay there forever. And this kind of rules that we would put into selling, so a low-income family or affordable housing couldn't go in, buy a house for, let's say, twenty, two-hundred thousand dollars, and it's really worth four-hundred thousand dollars, and turn around and sell it next year and make a profit, go somewhere else, that's to stay affordable for the life of the building.
Okay. And then let's talk about the cottages. On your presentation here, the square footage on, like, the footprint would be like nine-hundred square feet. And I recall that you brought this, for the knowing school property, you brought a presentation to us, and you were talking about the cottages. And can you, can you go over again, the prices were going to be like, for these houses, I believe, were somewhere around three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that was pre-COVID? So these aren't?
Market rate.
It was market rate, basically. So, so how, can you, once again, would you own the land and maintain ownership of the land?
When we did that proposal, the housing authority would maintain owning the land, the owners of the units would pay a housing fee, right, a HOA fee, if you will, and, you know, like a counter association type of fee. And that would provide the income to maintain the common areas and everything, so that it wasn't a burden to the town to maintain those common spaces. I think in that proposal, we had a lot of open space, we had garden areas, we had dog walking areas. So those can generate income, so we have to find a way to sustain that, that wouldn't burden the town. So we designed it that, in that manner. The advantage we have now is that, pre-COVID, there wasn't the IRA bill to do the energy rebates. So now we can take that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar mortgage and reduce it by half and still build a house for that amount.
Amazing.
But that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house is now like five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. But we still can reduce it in half, because the rebates that come back cover half of it, if we build it properly.
Right. And I think that's a possible way of keeping, where everybody wants to have their kids still stay in their community. And honestly, some of the houses that are going for sale in my neighborhood, I don't know how my kids would ever afford a house in my neighborhood right now. I mean, I just simply don't. It's astonishing. So.
And I've forgotten how many houses we had proposed for the knowing school property.
We had fourteen.
So, I mean, it's a sizable area.
Because, yeah, in your package, you had, it stated that you could put up to twelve cottages on an acre. I mean, that's a lot on an acre, but, but I do like, if you just look at the picture there, I love the little house, I love it. That is definitely something that somebody could either downsize to.
We're going to sell you the first one.
You may, because I would love to downsize. Because when you talk at Grasso Gardens, where it was like three-forty going to sixty-eighty-five, I'm, three-forty sounds good to me right now.
I don't know if all the shoes would fit in there.
Well, you know, when you're an empty nester now, it sounds delightful. So you have presented us with a lot of information here, and it's very interesting, and I hope that, as a council, we have made it one of our goals, to bring affordable housing to our community.
We'd love to come back and talk again, as your questions develop, and you have more information, just give us a call and we'll come back.
We do have monthly meetings, the fourth Wednesday of the month, they start at three o'clock, so that the residents can participate in. We alternate between Grasso and Pequot. Certainly welcome to come to those.
You can also email me, it's marcapaletti@grottonhousingauthority.org, if you have questions, or if you want to set a time to come see the properties or anything. If you have general questions, feel free to do that.
All right. Also, let me just ask, so with Grasso Gardens, you have, at this time, all your financing is basically lined up, and you feel confident to be able to go forward, is that correct?
We do have the financing lined up for both of those developments, yes. With the exception of the little bumping that we just, this week, we had a little curveball thrown down, it was about five-hundred thousand dollars more. But I think the offer of the ARPA funds will help.
Okay. And then, I'm about ready to wrap it up here, so I just want to correct something that I heard tonight, where that you are now allowing women and children. I think you always have allowed women. So.
Yes.
I think children are just like the new thing, that women are always allowed at your facilities, so I just wanted to correct that part.
Well, some of that, we might talk to our state reps, and maybe do something with the chaffa rules and the Department of Housing rules, that would allow us to do that.
So.
Just a point of clarification?
Yes?
What I meant was, obviously, the children would be.
That's not a point of clarification. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify my point that the women.
No, it's clarifying what they said is what the point of information is.
Through you, I'm just saying that I was talking, that the children obviously would come with the women, obviously. That's just to clarify.
Sometimes they come with men, too.
They could, but.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Madam Mayor, can we take a recess?
Yes. Sounds good. Let's take a ten-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
We're back from recess and I can't see what time it is and the clock is not working properly. It is 8:12. Next on our agenda is 2024-206, Granton Public Schools CT Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
I would. Superintendent Austin, Sam Kilpatrick, who is Facilities Director, Transportation, and also Food Services. This was a grant that Ernie Koschmier sought and he's not able to be here. Shannon Weigel is our Grants Coordinator and she helps us write every single grant. So we're happy that this one was achieved and we're going to tell you a little bit about it. So when you're ready.
We're ready.
Okay. So this was actually a grant that we were awarded for $250,000 for farm to school. And it's through the 2024 Connecticut Department of Agriculture. And it's Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant. And we're really excited about it. I'm going to let Shannon tell us a little bit about it because she was kind of knee deep in getting all the things ready. But it's really a sustainability grant and it's going to be used for educational purposes so our kids learn from this particular grant, so.
Good evening. So Ernie Koschmier, who's head of our Food Service Department, learned about this funding opportunity. And so we worked together on it along with Ben Moon, who's our K-5 Science Coordinator. This grant for $250,000 will allow us to purchase a shipping container and convert it into a hydroponics center. This will be placed at one of our schools. It'll be used to grow primarily leafy greens and other types of vegetables to be served in our school cafeterias. And will also be used as a, kind of like a supplemental classroom for students about hydroponics and environmental sustainability. So depending on where the container is placed, the students at that, that are at that school will be able to use it on a regular basis. And then the other students in the district will visit the container during field trips. It's estimated that the, the container will produce several thousand heads of lettuce each year. I don't know if you've seen any of these containers online yet, but they're becoming very popular in urban farming situations. This, what we're going to do is we're actually going to partner with a nonprofit organization out of Hartford named Levo International, who specializes in hydroponics. They just built a hydroponics system on the top of Hartford Hospital. We're going to partner with them to customize this container so that it is user-friendly and, yeah, requires low maintenance. Most of the containers that are being used nowadays are prefabricated overseas, shipped over here, but often they're very technical and then when they break down, it's hard to replace the parts. So this container will be customized to be easy to use and we'll also train our current staff members on the proper way to use it. Are there any questions about the, the program or the plan?
Madam Mayor, a point of information, just real quick.
Yes.
Normally, I do have to recuse myself on Board of Ed budget issues, but since this is a grant and in the town attorney opinion it states, since this is, since this is, interest is shared by a majority of the town residents, I can participate in it. So I just wanted to clear the record of that before the discussion began.
Okay. So Counselor Gajewski, would you like to move the motion then?
Oh, yes, certainly. To recommend a resolution to approve the Board of Education CT Kids Shipping/Container Grant. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Russk.
Point of information?
Yes.
Does this grant have to go through RTM or is this one of those that we don't have?
It does and I'll put that in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I just want it to be noted.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. I watched almost 98% of the Board of Ed meetings, so I did hear this in full discussion, so I don't have as much comments, more statements. And I am very familiar as I'm looking at one of the gardens here online that's kind of similar to what you guys are envisioning. And a lot of questions were asked about the, you know, what it would cost to maintain it. And Mr. Ernie stated that, you know, the piping and PVC piping is very inexpensive, very universal, very easy to replace, so maintaining it is like a very low budget. Because a lot of people ask, once the grant runs out, what is this going to look like to maintain? I love the fact because we look at the science programs and things and look at ways that we can enhance and show our kids and, you know, what is that whole saying, teach someone to fish and, you know, teach someone to grow and, you know, they'll, I think that's so important and a lot of children have not had that exposure at home possibly. And so having this ability to learn, this is a skill which I still haven't mastered, I'll be honest. I do not do well at growing food. But it is something that is important. The other benefits of the container-like, which was stated, for urban areas, it has been utilized because as we look at more acidic rain and other contaminants, you actually control your environment.
That's right.
So it actually is like healthier and more sustainable because you can control the temperatures and you can create your own climate within there. So there's so much about it that I could go on and on and on. I'm really excited for it. I think it's great that you guys are here presenting it, but to me, I mean, it's a no-brainer. It's money that's coming through, so who would say no to this? So thank you for your efforts in getting the grants and really excited to see it and visit it in the, the future. I know it also was stated by Ernie because some people were concerned, you know, looking at a storage container can be kind of, kind of industrial looking, but the hope is that it would be painted and kind of brought to life with maybe some children's art on there. And, and so I'm really excited to see this come to fruition. And the other part that I really like, as we talked right before this, about the needy and the low income and affordability, is the fact that there might be some opportunities where kids can go home with fresh produce. And, and, and one of the things that I've done a lot of outreach with, with the, the HIC Program, Health Improvement Collaborative, was looking at food insecurities. And a lot of people who are on fixed income eat a lot of packaged and processed food because if you're on a fixed income, you're not going to go buy fresh lettuce because it's not going to be there next week. If you're trying on a fixed income where you're only getting money twice a month, you're looking for unfortunately the things that most people would afford, stay away from, but they need it because it has the preservatives in it. So a lot of folks in that bracket have trouble affording fresh produce and they don't get enough of it. So this could just really open up those doors and I'm really excited and I'm in full support of this and I thank you, thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I just have a question. Well, in our back, part of the background packet says Thames River.
We're not sure yet, but we're working on it. I think there's something in the design, but we do want it at one of our schools.
Okay. Well, that was my question is, because I was trying to figure out what side of the building it would be on.
Yeah, that's what Sam's been trying to figure out too.
And I know the bottom of the field, you can go down, you can be, put it there somewhere, but you have the surrounding area with the houses and stuff, so I just, that. My other question is, putting that something, is it really big?
The container itself is an eight by 40 container, 40 feet long.
Does that need any type of permit?
Yes, we'll have to have a permit to place it on the grounds. We'll be submitting that to the town.
All right.
The, the container is being, presently is being designed specifically for us. One of the questions that they had is where would you want doors and stuff? So we're actually going to have a door on each end of it so that when the kids, when the children come to go through it, they'll walk in one end, follow through and go out the opposite end of the building. So these are all custom designed based on the needs of the district.
And I don't know if you've seen our food service truck, but it's farm to school and we certainly partner with all of our farms and our kids get this, these fresh vegetables all year long. They get fast frozen and, you know, and served up, so it's really a wonderful thing. And it's a really beautiful truck, so it's got children's artwork on it. So we were thinking kind of along the same line. So it'll be attractive. And my idea was to put some kind of solar panel on top so we wouldn't even have to pay for electricity. So I gave that idea to Sam.
All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. On the budget sheet, this part, it has, mentions here salaries and you have two positions and it says these are full-time and then there's, there's hours for them. Are these new hires that you're bringing in or how is this, what are we doing with that?
I believe they're already in another grant. I don't know if you know that, Shannon, the.
Yeah, so, so we do have the maintenance person on staff already. So we were anticipating that the additional work with the container would require additional hours, so.
It'll be added on. They'll be divided in some way that, that kind of fits for that.
And Ernie is currently, I think he submitted an application to Food Corps to obtain another Food Corps member to come and work for the district. And they provide a portion of the salary and this would be the other portion. This would be the match for that.
And it says here that this is a, a grant period for 24 months. So what is your, your plan when you get to the end of the 24 months?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have applied for multiple farm-to-school grants over the years and been successful. I believe we're anticipating that with the maintenance crew, that there'll be some kind of upfront learning and extra work that needs to happen in the coming year, but then that could be potentially scaled back over time. But Ernie will need to reassess that, yeah, at the end of the grant period.
Is, is that also the sort of expected lifespan of this, of the trailer?
I think it.
The container is expected to last 25 years.
Yeah.
And how about everything on the inside?
Yes, the insides as well, yes.
So you think you'll be growing for the next, you can be growing lettuce for the next 25?
That's the plan.
For the season, yes.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Cool, all right. Any plans to do anything with, you know, UConn or any of the other, you know, universities around here, meaning that we have them in our area, that, you know, this is a good kind of a joint project thing?
Yeah, so Ernie is in regular conversation with the UConn Extension and they're aware that we applied for the grant. They actually wrote a letter of support for it. So they'll be involved in the curriculum development and other program planning. And Ernie's also working with the Mashentucket Tribe also, because, is that correct?
Yes.
With their new greenhouses and I believe they're doing something similar.
They have a container like this that they're growing lettuce presently.
And they've donated some of it.
The heads of lettuce are about the size of, just larger than a softball, tightly packed.
Cool, all right. Congratulations and I look forward to hearing the next report on it when you get it going.
So we keep looking. We've been looking for these grants. Just know that Shannon has quite a list and I often put it in board notes and send it out to everyone. So take a look because she keeps updating it. So this is really exciting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Russk.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for this. It's so important to get fresh fruits and vegetables to our kids. I did learn recently that you were getting food from Mashentucket and was very excited to learn about that. I am concerned about the, the two salaries being in this budget. I, that was the first thing I highlighted on here. And you mentioned that there's no obligation for future funding by the town in here. How are we, I just don't want to see in two years that we're coming back and saying, but we have to fund these people. How do we, how do we keep these programs without adding to the tax base?
So the, I think the maintenance is just for the startup. And the Food Corps, we've had a Food Corps person before and they just last for that length of time. And then we've either gone and gotten another grant or, you know, that person has gone.
Okay.
It's a two-year position.
A two-year position and they know when they come in. But for those two years, they really work in our schools. Our schools have greenhouses, they have gardens, every single one of our intra-district magnets. And now, you know, with this, that's even using the hydroponics. Thames has already started, Fitch High School has hydroponics too. So I'm really excited about this initiative.
This is very exciting and I'm so appreciative to Ernie Koschmier and all that he does. I've always been a huge fan, so thank you, thank you Shannon for getting this.
All right, thank you. Counselor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you're getting the container custom-made and then you're going to build the garden inside. Is that correct? Is that, is that what I understand?
The interior, the, the container will come self-contained, ready to operate when it gets here.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I understood it differently, okay, not a problem. What is the container's summertime use going to be?
It will be, are you asking if it will be used during the summer?
Yeah, what is it's going, what's that going to be looking like?
It'll be used, it'll be used all year round.
All year round.
It will be used all year round?
So I need those solar panels.
Yeah, we have summer feeding programs going on too, all, we have programs going on all year round.
And even during those summer feeding programs, Ernie was passing out bags of fresh lettuce and, you know, that bib lettuce, the hydroponics and, and other vegetables, fresh vegetables all summer. So the families would come, the kids would be able to eat lunch and then the parents would take home bags of fresh fruits and vegetables. So that was really a positive initiative. I hope we continue that.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. I know also in the meeting, because I looked at the budget thing too, that he did state, Mr. Koschmier, that there are already employees in-house also that were willing to step in and flex over to help. Did I understand that correctly? That, you know, as far as looking at it so that this would start off, but long-term in longevity, that there would be some staff in-house that could help support this?
Yeah, the plan is to train staff members too. I mean, we have several magnet school coordinators that will be trained in how to use the greenhouse and how to use it to teach lessons.
One of the other suggestions offset costs that I also thought about in my notes here was some of the schools that have brought this initiative around the country that I've been reading online, they brought in some of the nonprofit agencies in the area that were volunteering time to run these in the weekends and stuff. So maybe something else we could tap into with the Stonington, I forget the name of the program off the top of my head, but they have a grow program with the whole farm that's, so maybe we can find some volunteers to step in, so. But I just wanted to say this and it's just so important as we look at, you know, feeding and helping. What freight farmers are saying, it says the ability to use, to use the use of greenery to create an environment that is conducive for growing food in all seasons, especially in places like Kodiak, is huge. Now while we cannot feed everyone on this island, we can certainly help provide many, many families with food access, something that can add nutritional value to what they are already putting in their, on their table. And this is Bright Bottom Farms. And the other one here states that our agricultural students have benefited greatly from the container farm. And these are programs that have been around for a while. Being in the area with limited space for a greenhouse or garden, the container farm provides a place for students to build upon the foundations we have set inside the classroom. Getting to see many students demonstrating their knowledge in the farm makes me one proud agriculture teacher, FFA advisor and agriculture teacher, FCSI. So the research, you know, that I've done with this and I have seen this in place, it's just, it can grow and it can be a community effort where people, even counselors maybe could even volunteer to go help on the weekend. So, all right, I'm excited to see where this takes us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing a number of questions. We'll be voting on Granton Public Schools Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant number 2024-206. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll look forward to bringing it to the RTM.
Bring us some lettuce.
I'll get you some lettuce.
Up next is 2024-184 Sustainability and Resiliency Progress Update. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Sure. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Good evening, Megan Cronado, Resiliency and Sustainability Manager.
Good evening. We don't have any motions, so it's just your presentation.
Okay, yeah. We have a PowerPoint that we'll go through, but, you know, really we wanted to kind of give an update of what's been happening to the last 18 months or so. Since Megan's been on board, there's been a lot of initiatives. We've come to you with a lot of grant applications that we've gone after and kind of wanted to talk about the work that we have done, that we are starting to do, kind of where things are going in the future. You know, always want to have these types of discussions before budget time as we're just thinking about where this kind of division within the department is going and the amount of items that we can work on. So we wanted to kind of just go over what we're doing and have a conversation about where you want the division to keep going.
Great, thanks, John. So I'll just start with a little bit of background. Like John said, I was hired in August of 2022, very end of the month, so it's been 18 months of being in this position. And just a reminder, especially since the last time I spoke to you was actually the previous council. So there was a resolution passed in March 2021 by the Granton Town Council committing the council to becoming leaders in climate change. And that was also the resolution that created my position. So I usually start my presentations with that and now that I've said it to you all, I'll stop, I promise. Next slide. So we've got to talk first about some grant-funded initiatives. Again, this is going to be familiar to most of you because we've brought these to you over the past 18 months. After that, we'll talk about some non-grant-funded programs that we've done and then talk to future ideas and where we would like to go. So the Downtown Mystic Resiliency and Sustainability Plan, we were here just back in December when we were starting to put together the recommendations for that report. That report was finished January 31st. So it is now online. I know that some of you are reading it. And I want to make it clear, although the plan has been completed, we are immediately pivoting into implementation. So I outlined a couple of bullet points of next steps that we're taking. The first being that we're securing another fellow through the University of New Hampshire Sustainability Institute. This fellow is going to spend 10 weeks with us over the summer solely working with local businesses on how to build their resilience. So this won't be specific to only downtown Mystic business owners. It will be a town-wide opportunity, but the idea was sparked during this Downtown Mystic Plan. So really trying to provide additional capacity to our local business owners as they're grappling with flooding that they've never experienced before, even flooding that they have experienced before, heat and all the impacts to their operations. Director Hanover with Public Works has put in a CIP request following up on the stormwater issues we know we have on Pearl and Gravel Streets. So really trying to further explore what could be possible. There's 44 acres of land that drain down into that system. And so looking for opportunities to either retain some of that water up in the watershed or try to make improvements through, you know, enlargening pipes, putting in flapper valves at the ends of the pipes, just different ways that we can try to make that system function better and decrease the flooding that has been shutting down Pearl Street in particular more and more commonly. Also submitted a sort of a application notice, notifying FEMA that we are interested in what's called their direct technical assistance program. So this is a program that has any funding attached. But FEMA programs are extremely technical. You have to design things to certain standards. There are very strict procurement policies that apply. And most of those programs require that you calculate what's called your benefit cost analysis. Those calculations themselves are generally have to be done by a consultant and cost thousands of dollars. So if you're going to invest in that, you want to make sure that you're putting together a proposal that has a good chance of moving forward. And so this direct technical assistance opportunity is a way that you can work with FEMA to really kind of explore your priority programs and do that matchmaking with their funding opportunities, walk through your questions with them and really get that insider point of view. So that's something that we indicated that we are interested to FEMA and learning more about that. Similarly, NOAA has an opportunity to support local governments in doing on-the-ground heat studies. And we also indicated our interest in that. We worked, and I have another slide on it, with a UNH fellow this past summer on planning for extreme heat. And we're continuing to talk to people about why they should care about extreme heat, even up here in the Northeast. And doing those on-the-ground studies can be really instrumental in showing people the true impact that is being faced and also then helping us target where we need to be putting shade structures, street trees, all of those sorts of things. Continued outreach, of course. I just talked with our Head of Building Inspection last week about potentially talking with the HTC, doing a presentation about historic structures and flood proofing coming out of this project. So that's something we're working to develop. And of course, future grant requests, probably focusing on pump station resiliency, focusing that Gravel Street pump station, roadway elevation feasibility and those types of projects.
And one thing to keep in mind, all of that work, that's just around one project that we're working on. So as you start thinking about all of the different things, grants that we're getting and the projects that we're working on, you know, we often go through this process where first we apply for a grant, which, okay, that's, you know, a lift and it takes work to do that. Then we receive the grant, then we actually have to go and manage and do the project, which takes often 18 to 24 months, working with outside partners, doing a lot of community building. And then, once the plan is done, we then have to go and implement the plan and find other, you know, matching resources for that. So just as we're talking about this, bless you, just something to keep in mind with, you know, each of these projects, it, it, there's a lot of time, effort in, in a very long time horizon that goes along with each one.
Next up, electric vehicles and charging. So a couple of months ago, we were here talking to you about the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. That's the one that with your blessing, we are trying to purchase two electric fleet vehicles and then also put in fleet-specific chargers here at the annex. That is formula funding from the federal government that we're also pairing with a rebate program from. that we're also pairing with a rebate program from Eversource. So we presented that to the RTM. They signed off on it in January, and we're just finishing compiling all the paperwork and we'll have that submitted hopefully by the end of this week. Another exciting thing that happened was during the summer, the state reached out to a number of municipalities because they were preparing a grant for the federal government and they were looking to potentially put in EV chargers at municipal facilities. And so we gave them a whole list of areas where we would like to get some chargers. And the one that made the cut was our Groton Public Library. So the state is, they were awarded the funds, so they've reached back out to us. They're starting to plan to add that additional charger in that location, which will be really helpful. I know from talking with Director Mealy, those chargers are in very high demand. So adding some capacity there will be helpful. The Deep Climate Resilience Fund, this past summer awarded us $200,000 of state funding to develop our first climate action plan. We have that leveraged against an $85,000 CIP from, I think, FY22. And so we are working with the state on the paperwork for that grant. We don't have the grant in hand yet, which is why you haven't heard about kickoff meeting or anything like that. But just to highlight again, with the climate action plan, that's really developing our roadmap for resiliency action moving forward. So it sends my marching orders and sets goals and aspirations for the town. We are going to be tackling both adaptation and mitigation with that. So adaptation is how we are grappling with climate impacts like flooding, extreme heat, wind. And then mitigation is how we are making decisions that influence our own greenhouse gas emissions. So like when we make upgrades to heating systems in our buildings, what kind of fuel are we looking for and those types of things. And we'll be doing really extensive community engagement throughout that entire process and we're hoping it's going to get kicked off at some point, really within the next few months. Long Island Sound's Futures Fund, this last year, we submitted and were successful in receiving two different proposals. I think we presented these to you back in like April, so I know it's been a while. The first was $190,000 to do the Learning Lots Phase One project. This is a project that was kind of repackaged from some ARPA materials that Public Works had put together back in the ARPA funding days, but really seeking to integrate the use of permeable pavement into town operations, especially because a part of our ARPA funding was used to purchase a vacuum truck that's needed to maintain permeable pavement. And so this is going to be a partnership with Yukon Clear, and we're going to be doing a feasibility study of the best places to be installing permeable pavement in town and then walking through that process with a consultant who has expertise of this in our public works to really do sort of like a co-design, so that our Groton staff become very knowledgeable about how to design, implement and maintain these systems. And why permeable pavement is important, it's a stormwater best management practice. So it actually helps clean water as water filters through. I mean, permeable pavement is hardscape that allows water to sink in. So it's great for stormwater management, and then also because it's soaking up some of that water and delaying it continuing down into the watershed, it can help reduce flood risk downstream as well. The second investment is $150,000 for the Haley's Brook Roadstream Crossing feasibility study. This focuses on the location where River Road crosses Haley's Brook in Old Mystic. That was the location that back in 2010, there was significant roadway damage. I think like 180 feet of road were really badly torn up and had to be replaced. This has also been flagged to us by Save the Sound as one of their top projects in the area for fish passage improvement. Some fish are migratory and they actually move up and downstream systems. And this particular crossing is a barrier to them and there's miles of good habitat upstream. So we pitched this to the Long Island Sound Futures Funds as, you know, kind of a dual focused project. We're trying to improve the ecological benefit to the, you know, the habitat there. And we're also being very mindful of the fact that this is an area that's very vulnerable to flood impacts. And so how can we kind of look at both of those through this feasibility analysis? And this is a partnership with the Nature Conservancy. Nature Everywhere is a program that we're actually be coming back with Parks and Rec to talk to you about in upcoming months. Shannon Weigle, who just presented to you, was really instrumental in this. This is a partnership, we're calling Go Groton, which is Get Outdoors Groton. So it's myself, John, Clinton Potter from Parks and Rec, Clint Kendy and Ben Moon from Groton Public Schools, and Dan O'Connell from GOSA. And our team was selected through a nationwide competition to get to participate in this Nature Everywhere program. What this program does is pair us with technical experts through a two-year planning process to figure out how we get equitable access for every child in Groton to nature outdoors recreation, as we know of all of the myriad of physical and mental health impacts that comes with that. And so that's something new that we're very excited about, that like I said, we'll be back in upcoming months to talk to you about some more, especially because there's some funding connected to it as well. So that wraps up the grant funded initiatives. And just to kind of put a bow on it, between all of those slides, it's over $650,000 towards resilience projects that we've been involved in coming in the door in the last 18 months, and we're looking to just build on that from here. This one really makes me smile. We held the first Southeastern Connecticut Youth Climate Summit on March 7th. This was a partnership with Marine Science Magnet High School. It was a wild idea I mentioned to their principal back when I started, and it became a reality thanks to the diligence and hard work of the Marine Science Magnet Environmental Club. They ran with it, they designed it, they led it. And we had over 80 high school students from four different schools participating, which was a really awesome thing to see. They had a great day of programming with a plenary session, a couple of breakouts. They learned about topics including, of course, climate change, water quality, environmental justice, political action. Representative Baumgartenner participated. He also helped secure funding to support this. So this was the first annual summit. We are looking to continue this in upcoming years and hopefully just make it even bigger and better. I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, the work Claire McCarthy did for us in summer 2023, helping us understand our vulnerability to extreme heat and figure out what we can do about it. And so that was also a project I want to highlight. We did a lot of community engagement. She and I went and tabled, I think, six different community events in different community locations as well. We partnered with TVCCA. We were at National London Out. We did farmers' markets. We did an Esker Point Beach concert. We were really trying to talk to different community members than we normally hear from on climate projects. And so the results of all of her work are available online. And similarly with the Mystic project, we are pivoting to implementation. So we are trying to figure out which of those recommendations we can start building momentum behind moving forward, especially now that we're approaching spring and summer will be here before we know it. Also want to highlight Sustainable Connecticut. This is a statewide certification program that I believe we've been certified through since 2019. And it is very rigorous and it is a lot of work. So it's not an insignificant amount of my time to manage Sustainable Connecticut. You have to track work across 13 categories and 77 actions. You have to reach certain amounts of points. You have to have points in every category. And it just requires a lot of documentation and things like that. This is a certification year, and so the deadline for the first rounder of review is April 10th. So I will be working on that even more in the upcoming weeks. I just wanted to mention it as something that also takes up a significant amount of time.
And this is one of those actions that we, as a town, were kind of directed to go after a number of years ago. It does take up a lot of time. And each year that goes by when we recertify, kind of the bar keeps getting raised because they want to make sure that communities are consistently doing more to stay, you know, Sustainable Connecticut certified. The one negative about it is right now, other than saying that we're a Connecticut, you know, sustainable certified community, there's not like grant funding or there's no dollars, no extra points yet on grants associated with this. So it's something that as time goes on, when we're looking at priorities and funding and other things, you know, it's just something we got to keep in mind that it does take a significant amount of staff time to keep this program going.
A few additional actions wanted to mention. This last year, we launched the Resilient Groton Instagram account. If you don't follow us, please do. So we're using social media to share updates on our work. We added a Resilient Groton section to the OPDS portion of the Town of Groton website, and so managing content there. Also have gotten involved a lot of different regional groups. I'm on the Citizens Advisory Committee of the Long Island Sound Study, thanks to Miki Weiss, making a connection referral there. And then I'm currently co-chair of the Steering Committee for the New England Sustainable Sustainability Network. So constantly networking with people, trying to find out what's working in other places and what potentially could work here. So talking about potential and future initiatives, like John highlighted a few minutes ago, we have the three, four new programs that I mentioned, the Climate Action Plan, the two Futures Funds Grants. Also, Nature Everywhere is really ramping up. And so implementing those grants and then implementing all of the recommendations from the projects that we've completed, like Downtown Mystic and Extreme Heat Planning, plus focusing on other, you know, issues and priorities that we know are in town that just haven't made their way into a project yet. Flooding on River Road, flooding in underpasses and, you know, along the Pecan River Corridor, just as easy examples that pop to the top of mind, you know, it's a significant amount of things that we have moving forward. And we don't want to stop there. You know, there's a lot of funding available. I take that very seriously. And so we're already talking with partners about National Coastal Resilience Fund, which has a specific carve out for DOD communities. And so we're really interested in looking there as a source of funding. Long Island Sound's Futures Fund has been really supportive of us in the past. We have two potential proposals moving forward, one of which with an external partner. The Protect Grant is a federal program that I'm continuing to learn about whether or not it could be an option, but that might be able to help us with some of our roadway planning, especially around sea level rise and elevation. There's a transportation alternatives funding through the COG from the state. There's FEMA funding programs like disaster mitigation grant program. And so the list could go on and on. You know, these are just a couple. And it's a constant process of managing which solicitations are out, learning about the solicitations, putting the partnerships in place and seeing if we really have something that can move forward. As I mentioned, we have the UNH fellow that will be starting the end of May, early June. And that's been a really great way for us to get some additional capacity on discrete projects. And so that's likely going to be a program that we continue going back to. It's ministered extremely well, and they've been a joy to work with. I am also working with People's Action for Clean Energy on a heat smart campaign. So what a heat smart campaign is, is really helping people take advantage and be knowledgeable about rebates available to them on things like heat pumps, smart thermostats, insulation, right? So how can people improve their homes through these rebate programs? And there's an added environmental benefit in there. PACE is really great about helping develop a really targeted approach, right? We have a lot of people that live in town. So how can we get the biggest bang for our buck in terms of who we target information to and how we do that information sharing? Some bigger ideas that have come up in past years, there was a sustainability review as part of the CIP in town budget process. And so there's been some conversation about now that I'm here, I've been here for 18 months, maybe bringing that back. And of course, we have the Plan of Conservation Development Updates and integrating resiliency throughout that is going to be a priority as well. So that's kind of the grand overview of where things are currently and kind of what we've built to in this program over the last 18 months.
And you know, and on top of that, kind of just some things we wanted to put on your radar is, you know, it's been great having Megan in this leadership position. She's really being, you know, looked at and viewed at as not only a leader in Southeastern Connecticut, but also through New England on this. So much to the point that funders are actually seeking us out now, telling us, "Apply for our grants. Go for this. We will," you know, "there's technical assistance available." But the tricky part then becomes that we're running out of capacity. And, you know, it's, I just want to put on the council's radar tonight that we did put additional positions in the budget for this upcoming year. And there's a lot of grant funds that are out there. Right now, where we are and what we've received, we're probably at capacity for maybe even a little bit over capacity for what Megan is capable of being able to do over the next couple of years. So that's just something we need to keep in mind if we want to keep going after these great opportunities for funding, doing things that we need to do anyway, as well as what's great is as we look at our CIP projects over the next couple of years, few years, dealing with flooding, those are often great for matching grants that can then do a lot more of the work for us that we would have to be paying for out of direct taxpayer dollars as well. So just kind of some things to put on folks radar. And then, you know, as I was kind of going back through this, something to make everybody aware of, back in, I think it was fiscal year 2016, the town had initially created a sustainability position, as well as a grant writer position and an office assistant to kind of support that whole division. But the grant writer and administrative support staff were never hired, that there were some concerns, like state level funding, budget woes that year. And that kind of positioned a state as that one spot that was currently occupied by someone else within Public Works. And that whole kind of idea of creating a division to go after grants and really implement this whole program didn't really get off the ground. And as we're trying to do that now, looking at all these great opportunities that are out there, I just want to make sure the council's aware of that. And, you know, I think just the great work that Megan's been doing, we've gotten a lot of community support on this, kind of wanted to put it out there for the council, for you to consider. And the last thing I'd like to do is to make you aware of things as we're going through the budget process, but instead to kind of highlight some of the bigger things that are moving forward and that we've worked on.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank you for your efforts. This is something I'm really passionate about and definitely was in full support of that March 2nd, 2021 Town Council Initiative. And I, you know, want to thank Groton Conservation Advocates too for, you know, being a kind of driver in certain areas. You know, the work that you've done thus far in 18 months, you know, is just brilliant. You know, that's what I say, is brilliant. You can't put a price tag on, you know, what we're trying to do here in the community and really doing the outreach and efforts and looking at, you know, from the work that you're doing, from, you know, collaborating with youth to looking at different initiatives and posting so many different studies and things like that. And so I really think that this is vital. Probably won't see it all in my lifetime, exactly the benefits, but hopefully my children will. But it is important that we're moving as we grow and develop our town. We need to be looking at it in these types of capacities and ways. I guess the question is, you know, it was brought up, what do you feel, you know, is needed to grow this program out based on those positions that you're stating? Where do you think that you need more support? That's my first question.
Okay. So, and again, we'll get into a little bit of this as we go through the budget process, but really kind of like a sustainability resiliency specialist position, similar to, you know, Megan's position is a division within the Office of Planning and Development Services. And right now, she's a Division of One. A lot of our other divisions that are really kind of setting a path for what we're doing in Groton, Southeastern Connecticut, we have, you know, additional staff that, you know, there's usually some type of, you know, a manager, whether it's like, you know, Paige or Deb or our Management of Inspection Services and then other staff that can help with that. So really, we're looking for a position of a resiliency and sustainability specialist, as well as some administrative support staff. We're thinking of, with some of our new building permit software, actually trying to split that administrative support staff between our building department as well as the sustainability division. Our building department numbers have, not to get too much off topic, have really gone through the roof in the time that I've been here with no additional staff. But again, that's kind of a budget discussion. I'll make that pitch then.
You know, you know, just looking at, you know, the flooding and stuff, I know I had sent an email with a bunch of like, just generic pictures of like what other towns were doing to implement, you know, you know, you can't get a seawall built overnight. But there were ways to alarm the community and put up some signage on roads that people, visitors and people who've lived here might not be used to flooding now. Is that anything that you think in that plan? I haven't got through the whole plan yet. I got through the whole heat study. I haven't finished the other one that just went up. Will there be any form of implementation or a plan of rolling out some new signage to, even though we can't fix the problem, but to alert for safety reasons, the concerns of where areas are flooding?
Yep. We had a recommendation about some public safety type measures, and we included the roadway signage. roadway signage in that recommendation. And then we did have an initial conversation with the Public Safety Committee, following up on your email recommendations as well.
Perfect. That's all I have for now. I mean, I think it's, you have to seed something and invest early. And again, when sometimes we may not see the full benefit come to fruition, you know, but this is a huge, like, you come in and you just went running and you brought in a ton of money. And I just want to commend you for all your efforts and, you know, your updates and all the outreach that you're doing. I just appreciate it so very much. And you definitely put us on the map, as it was stated. You know, I did speak to someone at UConn, and I was down there, and they're like, oh, didn't you guys hire a, you know, sustainability person? I'm like, oh, you know, the people, people are aware. And I think that's awesome. And I look forward to the continued efforts and just to see where we can grow and just, you know, thank you again, and appreciate it. I'd love for your slide presentation, if you don't mind sending it in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Megan. And great job, and great job in what you brought to the town in terms of exposure and grant money and efforts and all of that. So thank you very much. I read through your.
I knew you were working on it.
I was working on it. It was breakfast reading while I was eating my cereal. So a number of things stood out in here, and I just wanted to ask.
Can you say what report that is?
This is the Downtown Mystic Resiliency and Sustainability Plan, and it's on the Greater Groton website. You can download it and print it out and read it, so.
Or read it online, see a paper.
It's a lot of reading online. Might just using electricity so much. So, so a number of things stood out in there in the report that I thought, I just wanted to highlight, and then I have a question. One was the one-way valves. I think, reading through this, it seems like that's, it's a priority, that it's something we need to deal with, dealing with the hillsides where the water's coming down onto Pearl and Gravel. Education, which is where my question is, education of business owners and homeowners on what they can do individually in their houses, raising utilities and sort of, I don't know if it's, that's not probably not floodproofing, it's probably, is that the floodproofing stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I wondered if the person that you're bringing in this summer, is that person, is that their task to kind of educate homeowners and business owners of what they can do?
Yes, they'll be focused solely on business owners, but part of it is going to be walking through some of those relatively inexpensive, low-cost things that people can do to protect their businesses. Some of that is even processes, you know? If there's a flood predicted, do you have materials on site so that you can wrap up your cash register or your, what do they call them now, they're in the IBC cash registers? But, you know, can you, do you have a plan to move your inventory up? Do you have, you know, plans for communication for all of your staff? Do your staff know that they can't park right on Main Street or in the adjacent areas? Some things like that, that really don't take a tremendous amount of time, but, you know, are also when business owners are just focused on trying to keep the doors open day-to-day, maybe not a luxury they've had the time to think of to date. So the Fellow is really going to try to provide that added capacity by bringing in some of those tools and resources, having that information at the ready to be able to talk to people, really, and depending on where they are, be able to help them. Maybe they've thought about this, they want to learn more about business continuity planning. Or maybe it really is just basic, hey, here's best practices for disaster preparation.
So are you planning to set educational material or checklists, things that can be left behind that the business owner can go off and study and figure out where, what applies to them?
Yes, in part. So some of those, a lot of those already exist online, and we share those through, we had done a Zoom outreach event to local business owners as part of the Mystic study. So we were already starting to share those types of resources, but the Fellow will come in and kind of put together their toolkit of what they think are the best resources, and then have those to be able to work with the business owners, leave them copies, you know, and follow through on those.
And that stuff. One of the other ideas that I thought, I think is very important, is waterproofing our town pumps, pumping stations, especially the one in Gravel Street, but we have other ones in other places, too, that there's a lot of valuable equipment inside of those places. And probably weren't, wasn't planned at the time we built them to, that there was going to be water lapping up around the edges of them. So I think that's a priority. There was an idea that you, that's expressed in here about staging equipment. It's just one of the ideas that you have. You have a whole, there's a whole series, and I recommend people look at Chapter Six, because that's where all the recommendations are. But one of them is sort of pre-staging equipment, pumps, you know, vacuum cleaners, all kinds of things that you would use to sort of, you know, clean up after a storm. Can you just talk a little bit about, is that a viable idea that can be done, and what does that sort of entail if we did something like that?
Yeah, it kind of falls into a class of what people in this field are calling resilience hubs. So how are you putting together, you know, and sometimes it's paired with like emergency shelters and things like that, but how are you creating centers that people can go to for the resources, information, and sometimes equipment that they need? Just knowing how devastating floods can be, having places like that already planned, implemented, ready to go can make the difference between people having a smoother recovery versus not. So the exact mechanics of how we would do that, we've not yet put pen to paper and figured out, but this was an idea that came from a local resident who said, listen, I live on Pearl Street and I don't have a garage, I don't have a shed, I don't have a basement where I can store equipment that can't get wet. So what am I supposed to do? I try to rent these things before a flood, like everyone else. And, you know, he had gone so far as to contact hardware stores in Massachusetts and couldn't get his hands on them. So it was really, you know, that recommendation was crafted in response to a need we were hearing from him and other local residents, that this was very much top of mind, it was very much a concern of being able to access that type of equipment.
One of the things that, I guess I didn't pay much attention to, or didn't think was that important, you highlight about, you highlight it, it's sort of Chapter Five, is heat. And you just sort of think it's hot, and, I don't know, I don't, I never thought of heat, especially in the Northeast as being such a major problem. Have you noticed that? I mean, we're a major tourist hub. Are we having people that have problems with heat when they come here?
I think one of the most powerful moments of the final public meeting we had in Mystic was when a person who works at a local business on Main Street said that it is not uncommon that during hot days in the summer, people come into their store suffering from heat impacts, seeking air conditioning because they're already, you know, feeling, I don't know if they're getting woozy or dizzy, but all of these things that happen when your body starts to really struggle to process heat. And so we are hearing from people that they're seeing those impacts, they're hearing those impacts, and especially in a place like Mystic where, yes, people are going in and out of stores, but people are spending a lot of time outside. You know, think about the Mystic Arts Festival and things like that. It's something that we really need to be more mindful of when we plan, just making sure that people have access to resources. And the work that I know Groton Beautification Committee partnered with Public Works to put in the bottle-filling station, you know, something so small can really have a huge impact, and just people having access to cold, drinking water to make sure that they stay hydrated, even if they're not going to grab lunch at a restaurant. You know, it's things like that that don't have to be like monumental in size, but can really make a difference in helping people have the resources they need to cope with those types of conditions.
How many bottle-filling stations do we have downtown?
In Mystic?
Yeah.
That's the only one I know of. There's plans to hopefully put one in at the pump station as well.
Okay, all right. Just the final thing, just more of a note, you know, that last storm that we had, the big one that we just recently had that flooded, it was quite eye-opening, you know? I've read all the stuff and watched all the Netflix specials, and you kind of think you know until you walk down and you stand there, and the only street that was left was West Main Street, was the only street that didn't have water on. Everything else was completely flooded with water. So it was pretty eye-opening just seeing the effects of sort of what the future might come with all that, with all that water there, so.
And I think, one last comment on that, if I could, what's really striking about that is that the biggest of the storms, we had a string of them in December and January, the return interval was like one-in-10-year storm. And we had that level of impact, cars abandoned, people unable to, you know, like leave their home if they had, you know, emergency services, they had no way of getting out, roads, multiple roads shut down. And these are not 100-year storms. These are storms that are going to become more and more common and are relatively kind of quote-unquote commonplace storms. They're having that significant amount of impact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first question I want to ask is about your summer fellow position. I believe I saw on one of the slides you had one last year, so is that kind of like a revolving program? And could you talk about that program a little bit?
I'd be happy to. So it's run through the University of New Hampshire, or UNH. They have a Sustainability Institute, and so on, and on an annual basis, they run this summer fellowship program. So every year, the town has to apply to be a host organization. And there's lots of other towns throughout the Northeast and local businesses that do the same. And so once you get approved as a host organization, which essentially means they read your pitch of a project and they thought it would be a good fit for a student, then they run a process of soliciting candidates. So we've both years asked for post-baccalaureate, so students that have just wrapped up a four-year degree, maybe they're master's students, and that's available to students nationwide. And then UNH runs the entire program. So the town does not hire those students. We don't do any of the payroll, anything like that. UNH manages all of it. They have the students in mentor groups, they provide a lot of support outside of, you know, the support that we provide, to really create networks for the Fellows and make sure it's a really rewarding experience for them. And it's, like I said, it's just run really beautifully. This is something we participated in. Last year, Public Works had had Fellows through this program previously, though, and I, from what I've heard, it was always a really great experience for the town.
Yeah, we just did the interviews last week, two weeks ago, for that particular position for the upcoming summer. Great pool of candidates that we had. Again, UNH kind of goes through that whole process and hands us, you know, with their help, a good pool of applicants. We do the interviews with folks from UNH. Then we move forward and offer, you know, the position, we kind of rank them in order, and bring them on. And it's a very low-cost effort for the town to get someone that is usually a graduate-student level, participating with a lot of energy in the field, incredibly knowledgeable, and just looking for some practical experience, and we can kind of unleash them on some of these projects. And it's been a great success. You know, in the past, people would say, oh, can you get an intern to do this particular project? In order to get a quality intern, I mean, you, you know, yes, you can get some in with undergrad, but really the graduate-student level ones just bring a whole other level of professionalism and focus to what we're doing. And we've seen a lot of success with that. And in next year's budget, we actually put two of those in there, one to focus on the community rating system and another on undisclosed, the project not determined yet, based upon kind of what we do over the next year or so.
Well, I appreciate that, and it's sort of, you know, educating the next generation. I think it's really great of our town. You discussed this year's summer fellow will be working with small businesses and flooding. What supports do, does the town currently offer to address those flooding issues that say, one of the business owners comes back and says, I need this help? You know, what can the town do to assist that?
Aside from technical assistance, we don't have a formal program. So this is really the start of trying to develop something that is meaningful and concrete to help our local business community. I mean, we can make recommendations for resources that local businesses can go after, but like I said, this is, and this is, I don't know of any other local governments who are developing programs of this sort around climate hazards and local businesses.
All right, got it. Thank you for that information. Lastly, I drove around, this is more of a statement, but I drove around Downtown Mystic. I don't believe it was the January storm, I believe it was the December storm. And I ended up being driving on, I think, Pearl Street? Yeah, Pearl Street by St. Mark's, and it was just a complete flood zone. And then I ended up having a TUI, and then going, I tried to get on Gravel Street, couldn't get there, and I ended up getting out of my car, and the postman was in the exact same one. He's like, yep, I am not walking in today. So it is just concerning because it is, if people can't get their mail just because the road is so flooded, that's how, that's, that is the level of flooding that is going on down there. So just to bring attention to that, I thank you for all of your work, and I look forward to seeing all the great work you do.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much for the presentation, very informative, appreciate all your work, especially bringing in the $600,000 in 18 months, that's terrific. It's clear to me, as we're talking, clear to everyone, that we have huge issues that are coming down the road. And we're not talking about a million or two million, we're talking about multimillion dollars down the road, 50, 100, 150. So my question is, and I brought this up in the past, to impact the taxpayer with those funds later is going to be detrimental. And I brought up the Stormwater Authority again in the past, and the reason being is because we can implement that to assess fees to organizations that are not currently paying taxes in the town. Subbase, Groton, London Airport, Peak One Hospital, others to name a few. Have you done any more research on the ability to implement such a plan, or have you heard anything about others and how they're collecting those fees to set up plans to mitigate some of these sustainability issues?
I'm knowledgeable about stormwater authorities. I worked for eight years before this in Maryland, which, when I first moved to Maryland, at state level, they passed legislation requiring stormwater authorities at the county level. That was then repealed when the governor was, a different governor was elected. So I am somewhat knowledgeable about those. I read the report that was at CPM Smith, the contractor that worked with the COG, had done for the other communities in our southeastern Connecticut area. Past that, we've not done any calculations specific to Groton. We did include a recommendation in the Mystic study to further consider whether a stormwater authority might have, be a piece of the puzzle of financing for, for climate resilience work in Downtown Mystic, but past that, we've not done a legwork on it.
Yeah, our consultant also had looked at whether or not you could carve out sub-districts, so whether or not you'd need to do a stormwater, essentially, authority for the entirety of the town, or if you could do it in, say, like a watershed district. His research showed that you could do it on a watershed basis, so it wouldn't have to necessarily be the entirety of the town, if we wanted to start it in a smaller kind of pilot area. But again, we didn't really start running any numbers or do anything else, you know, we'd be looking to the council for direction on that if we were to go that way. Historically, there has been grant funding out there to study, to implement, to get kind of some of those programs off the ground. But again, that's one of many different things that we could do to manage stormwater and flooding.
Okay, thank you both for that. Appreciate it.
All right, I guess we're all set. Thank you for coming out and great presentation. And I would like to say that I love grants, and I have said it before, and I'll say it again. So you go get them. And I would like to give credit to Mr. Stevers, who's actually walking out the door right now, that he said your position would bring the town millions of dollars, and we are on that path. And I am glad we took his advice and brought your position forward and hired you. And I have talked to other leaders in communities nearby, and they are jealous that we have your position, and they wish they also had one as well. So I thank you for everything. I love the grants. Go get them, keep it up, and especially the ones that cover the CIPs. Those are great. Those are really good. So thank you, and you guys have a great night, and thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Bordelain?
Yes, I was just wondering, because some people don't know how to navigate. When I say, hey, the report's up there, don't know how to navigate our website as well, sometimes I even stumble. Is there any way these reports, like the heat study, I know it went up at one point, are these going to go on the social media thing, so people can hyperlink them as well to accept, you know, you know, let them know they're there? Or any type of public post in the paper or anywhere just to say, hey, you know what, to draw people to this study, to read it? Because it is a very thick, I only have about three-quarters of the way through, but I think it's important for people to kind of get to it.
Yeah, that's a great point. We have the Mystic study in two places. We're using both Greater Groton and the town website, and I believe the heat report is in both as well. I am learning more about links in Instagram. I had a resident tell me that I should engage someone young who can explain to me how it works with links and whether they can be on posts and stories, but that's a great point. We'll look into making sure it's more widely known, that people can access the reports in a couple of different locations.
And usually, whenever we do a project like this, we always reach out to the reporters at the day, let them know about the meetings that we're doing, the reports, the draft reports, the final reports. And they've been really great, kind of working with us to help get that word out as well. And they always put hyperlinks in there for the reports.
Yeah, because there's some people still that don't use social media, but we want to make sure they know about this, so that'd be great. Hopefully, a report will come out in some type of newspaper or something for people to access and draw them to the report. So thank you.
All right, thank you. You have a good evening. Thank you.
You too.
Next up is 2024-226, mobile home park discussion. And Director Reiner is staying with us, I guess, for this one.
Yep.
I will start off by saying, this is something I had brought forward. I've been asking town staff about this for some time and digging into the possibility of, as you can see in our packet, currently existing parks can expand their land area in residential, commercial, and mixed zones, as long as they do not increase the number of mobile homes. So in Groton, you are not allowed to bring in any more mobile homes than what we currently have. So which also means the parks we have now, even if they own additional land and they can put more mobile homes on them, they are not allowed to do so. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then, which also means that there are no more mobile home parks allowed anywhere in Groton as well. This is part of our affordable housing plan, which includes recommendations to consider allowing new mobile home parks or additions, I would guess, and along with design guidelines and conditions in locations with sewer and water in place. And this is coming to us as, I would like us as a council, because we cannot do anything for planning and zoning, but we could send a letter to planning and zoning and request they review their regulations and take this topic up as something that maybe, now that it's, some time has passed, that maybe it's something that they update. So did you have anything you would like to say as well?
Yeah, sure. Just a few quick things. One, I think, you know, we, it was nice that we had a presentation tonight from the Groton Housing Authority, but, you know, with housing and affordable housing, it's, there's never a single silver bullet, and I do think there would be a lot of good opportunity within the town if we did relook at our mobile home regulations, because they are outdated. I think maybe an older mindset of what a mobile home is, because right now, mobile homes in our town are great affordable housing that's not deed-restricted. It's just by the, the nature of the density that's there and the rents that are there. It's affordable to a lot of homeowners, people looking to downsize and relocate. I mean, that, it's something that we often hear from people, that I'm selling my home and I'm moving to one of the mobile home parks because I don't need something as big anymore, because we haven't been building enough even market-rate housing. And, you know, as we talk about housing, and I feel very strongly about housing creation at all income levels, it's, I could talk to you about it for hours. But we will actually be talking about housing and affordable housing at one of our community conversation meetings, I believe, the one in April, so just putting a little plug in for that. But when it looks at mobile homes, you know, there's also a lot of other recommendations within this plan that I'd encourage the council to look at and read through, as well as, I think it's, if the council wanted to send something off to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it really might be to look at a number of these different initiatives that could help increase some of our housing stock in town. You know, there's, over the course of the past couple of years, there's been a lot of focus on accessory apartments as another way of having affordable housing, and they're great, it's a great tool. We've allowed them for a long time. But we only get about 15 of those a year. It's not something that is making a significant difference in our overall housing stock, but it's something that's available to people, just as, you know, the mobile home parks. I think we could see an increase in units if we did allow new mobile home parks and additional units there. And some other easier, low-hanging fruit is looking at some of our zoning districts that do or do not allow duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes, and allowing them by right without any negatives from a density bonus or from an extra land area needed, but just really looking at footprints. If you look at what some municipalities through the region are doing, you're seeing apartment buildings that basically look like a large, single-family house, because some of the units that people need nowadays or want, four, five, 600-square-foot units are being, are being built, and that's what people are looking for. So it's not just, hey, everything needs to be a 1,200 or 1,600-square-foot unit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. I would just like to also add my support for however, you know, we could give either a letter or however the planning and development would do this. Just watching the housing prices that have just gone up in the, in the number of years that I have been here, and my house, it's, it's pretty much, it's over-doubled in the value. So it's just becoming out of reach for so many people. And having walked as campaigning through every mobile home park that we have in the town, we have a lot of really nice ones, and being able to expand those or add to them would be, you know, agreeable thing to do. So I would just add my support in terms of whether it's a letter or however, whatever the best method is to do that, to, you know, open this up so we have, you know, every option at our disposal, just like you're saying, the duplexes and triplexes, too, and just make sure everything is open for, for housing, being that we have such a need. You, you know, the meetings that you've been doing where you've been highlighting, I think, 6,000 homes that we need?
Yeah.
Something like that. We're not going to do it by building just single homes.
No.
So we need, every tool on the table has to be there. So I just lend my support for doing whatever we can to open that list up.
Yeah, it's interesting. I think the largest subdivision we've had in the past 15 years, maybe even a little longer, was a seven-lot subdivision. So we're not seeing a big push for single-family housing within subdivisions anymore in town. Some of it has to do with availability of land, the difficulty of developing the land that we do have left, and then also kind of what the markets dictating.
Do you have a sense of when that, that change, was it a regulation change that made it sort of closed off the mobile home parks? But how long has that been in effect?
I, I don't have a date. I don't think they've been allowed to expand or add units for as long as I've been here. I, I think these regulations may have been written back 50s, 60s, I mean, you know, before I was born, so.
So it's a long.
Yeah.
So we're due for a review of this and an upgrade?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Kajaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, Director, just a quick question. The, you just mentioned the largest subplot was seven houses, so when was that project done?
Oh, that was just done in the past year off of Allen Street, and that's actually, I think, the majority of those units are for family members. So that, that was the largest, like, subdivision of land, creating new lots, as opposed to, you know, an apartment complex like Triton Square, which is 305 units, or what's happening at Colonel Legyard, or, you know, some of these, we have some conversions that are happening of some of our older hotels in town.
And what has been the largest, like, single-family home development we've had in recent years? Have we had really any?
So that seven-lot subdivision?
That's it.
In the last 15 or more years, that's been the largest single-family home subdivision of development.
Okay. Um, and then...
Question.
Yeah, that does answer my question. I just can't remember my question. Oh, well, I'll take a turn if I remember.
In my, one other comment with, you know, as we grapple with this as a community, we are not unique. Every other community is dealing with these same problems. I currently serve as the Vice President of the Connecticut Chapter of the American Planning Association. We are trying to put together a forum on housing, to talk about housing options and what different municipalities and planners can do, you know, across the state, looking at rural, suburban, and urban, to try to start going after what solutions are out there, understanding traffic, understanding septic and sewer and water limitations, stormwater, trying to look at, you know, the whole gamut of these issues and what, you know, all of us can do to start addressing this regional, you know, New England national housing crisis, but what can we do within our communities?
Madam Mayor, I'm not going to yield the floor. I remembered my question. How many current mobile home parks do we have?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I can get back to you on that. I feel like there might be five or six, but...
Okay.
But don't quote me on that. I can get that back to you for tomorrow.
And do you know how many are, how many total mobile homes there are?
I have that number in a report somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be nice, too. And then, if it had, yep, that's it. All right, I'm good.
I see John getting on his computer. All right, Counselor Rusk?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and walking us through this. I do agree, we do need housing creation for all levels in Groton. I think that is vitally important, and this definitely could be a way of moving forward. We've had at least two mobile home parks that have closed since I have lived in Groton in the past 25 years, 28 years, 29 years. Cherry Circle closed in military housing, and there used to be a mobile home park on the corner of Route 12 and Walker Hill.
Yep.
Now Cherry Circle is now housing, so it couldn't be reestablished. But if, does, could you use that property again for mobile homes as the current zoning laws stands?
It is possible. I would want, before I would go and make a determination on that, I would want to talk, I'd want to look through the file and see if there was an actual abandonment of the use through some of the action that they did. I'd want to talk to the town attorney about that as well. It's possible, but, I mean, the zoning on that property does allow for higher-density housing or mixed-use development, so there are some options there. But before I give you a real yes or no on that, I'd need to kind of dig through the file a little bit on that one.
And for the record, that is private property.
Yes.
And I'm not proposing that.
Yes.
I'm just asking the question, and I don't have control over that property at all. I think that this is an important step to move forward and keep talking about. I would, I would love to see, you know, where the footprint is and definitely consider looking at if we could make it a little bit bigger, because this is, I mean, mobile homes are not inexpensive. You think of a mobile home and you think an inexpensive house, they're running for 125,000-plus. It's not cheap. There's no inexpensive housing in the area. So when we, you know, we just talked about it earlier tonight, when you look at young people starting out, they can't afford to live in the area, they can't afford to buy property here. So I just think that this is another tool in the toolbox to maybe help people stay and live in the community that they love. So thank you.
Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The terminology "mobile home" reminds me of an argument I had with my brother via text. He bought, what I determined, was a double-wide, and he had it plopped on his land in Canap, Utah. And he kept describing it to me, and I said, oh, yeah, the double-wide mobile home. No, it's a manufactured home. And I said, and he described it again. I said, yeah, yeah, it's a mobile home. He said, no, it's a manufactured home. And we went back and forth, and I, I got online and I researched it. Prior to the '70s, mobile homes were primarily large campers. They weren't built to last, they weren't built with any real standards. So in the '70s, the federal government made a law, you need to build into these standards. And then the manufacturer said, well, if we're going to do that to those standards, we're not calling them mobile homes. So manufactured homes became a term in the '70s, and mobile homes is a bit derogatory. So if we could, at the very least, change our terminology to make it not seem so derogatory. People hear "mobile home," "mobile home parks," and they're like, eh, but they're manufactured homes. The newer ones are much better built. I've been in older ones, I've been in newer ones. The newer ones are very much better built, and they're homes just like the one I live in. Just a statement, wasn't really a question.
Thank you. In our package, it has the zoning changes to encourage housing growth, and you give, on this list, there are some bullet points. There are six of them. And these are things that were in the housing report. Consider, and can you please explain what some of these are, because I may not know? Consider R7 and/or R12 zoning districts for additional allowed housing typologies, three-to-four-unit buildings or more. What is R7 and R12?
So R7 and R12 are zoning districts. The R7 is a 7,000-square-foot lot minimum, the R12 is a 12,000-square-foot lot minimum for minimum lot sizes, and allowing other housing typologies for that three or four, so I talk about a duplex, a quadplex, a triplex, you know, three and four bedrooms, the triplex, the quadplex, allowing those by right. And often, what you can do is create design standards for that duplex, quadplex, triplex, doesn't look any different than the other homes in the, in the neighborhood or abutting to it, but you can get a lot more density. And often, that's done by, instead of having a four-bedroom, single-family home, you might have a triplex with all two bedrooms, or one bedroom, two bedrooms, a mix, or there's different unit sizes that you can start doing to accommodate that. Often, there's been a fear that, oh, okay, there's then going to be renters, it's going to, you know, there's, there's a lot of fear in the way that nationally, we've done our zoning, and that's something that I think a lot of people are now starting to address in realizing the differences in kind of the, the single-type neighborhoods that we've created through what, at one point in time, was thought, oh, well, this, this will be good for everybody, but it really hasn't worked out quite that way.
The second one is, consider adding an open-space subdivision district with a smaller lot size requirement, possibly in the fort, I mean, the five-to-10-acre range. Current district requires 20.
So right now, in order to be even eligible to do an open-space subdivision, you need to have a minimum lot size of 20 acres. So an open-space subdivision is just another tool for how you can subdivide your land, overall density staying similar, but doing smaller lot sizes, which then results in shorter roads and less infrastructure being built. But the minimum acreage to start that subdivision process is 20 acres. So the lot sizes of each house lot doesn't have to be 20 acres, but what the, the raw land to start from has to be 20. So dropping that down to a lower number, which would then allow some of these other, maybe smaller lots, to take advantage of the open-space subdivision requirements.
Thank you. Consider ability to add units to existing mobile home parks if land is available and standards can be met. And what does it mean by standards can be met?
So basic minimum standards, that would be within the regulations. So can, is there sewer available? Is there water available? Because if there's not sewer and water, we do want to be cautious of adding density to an area. The last thing we want to do is harm the environment. Also, looking at additional stormwater, so rainwater runoff standards and things along those lines.
New mobile home parks are not currently allowed in Groton. Consider allowing with design guidelines or conditions and in locations with sewer and water in place. Same.
Pretty straightforward, yeah.
Pretty straightforward. Consider some changes to accessory dwelling unit regulations, and that's discussed later in the report. And then, consider some changes to encourage senior housing and accessible units, discussed later in the report. Do you have anything to say on those two topics?
So accessory dwellings, I think we actually did make some changes to the regulations when the state law changed. But right now, for an accessory dwelling unit, if you own a single-family house, you can do an accessory dwelling unit. If you own a duplex, you cannot do an accessory dwelling unit. So there might be some ways of doing, allowing accessory dwelling units on lots that have more than one dwelling unit per buildable land area. There are some places, I believe in California, Seattle, that are now requiring, with new construction, that you build accessory dwelling units or two accessory dwelling units, because there's such a housing shortage. Again, depending on if that accessory dwelling unit is attached or detached, those are also ways of doing it. But construction costs are high. I mean, as we heard from the Housing Authority, you know, building some of these units, it gets incredibly expensive. Converting a basement to an accessory apartment might not be, you know, overly expensive, but, you know, knocking the roof off of your garage and putting a accessory apartment above it might cost you $150,000 or more. Things are expensive to build right now. And then, changes for senior housing and other accessible units, just what else can we do, maybe lesser bedroom counts, and just, you know, encouraging different development patterns.
All right, so I'm in favor of all of these and asking... All right. So I'm in favor of all of these, and asking Planning and Zoning to look at these changes. And so I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we send a letter to the Planning and Zoning. I don't know exactly how I should be wording this, but my motion's going to be to send a letter to Planning and Zoning with the, the first sentence and the six bullet points on there, and ask Planning and Zoning to respectfully review these regulations and make any changes they seem, they deem necessary, or, you know, an advancement in our community. I don't know how else to really say it.
To begin to implement the Affordable Housing Plan?
Say it one more time.
To implement the Affordable Housing Plan.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Burt, did you have something to say?
I just wondered, is there any changes in the upcoming POCD that should be recommendations to that?
There could, I mean, one is part of the update to the POCD. We will be incorporating all of the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Plan into that. I mean, there are other things that I, I think as a community, we will begin to grapple with, you know, just as we talk about all these excess school properties, excess public properties, you know, the 900-pound gorilla in the room of the Mystic Education Center, and trying to do a larger community thought process and vision around what the future of that land area is. Those are going to be some of the things that I think we start grappling with, within the plan of conservation and development. But again, the, the POCD is the vision documented for what we want, and then the zoning and other strategies and policies are what truly implement those things.
Right. And as a body that cannot tell Planning and Zoning what to do, this is a request for them to review it, and please make changes if you see necessary. But it's trying to bring it to their attention, because I personally believe that mobile homes are the easiest way for someone to gain homeownership that is affordable. Ownership with equity in it, like where you can sell it and make money back. And mobile homes are also an alternative to an apartment. And I think it actually is more affordable to live in a mobile home than it is possibly in an apartment, when it comes down to it. This is for people that are downsizing, retirees, for people starting out. And I will just say, I lived in a, in a high-rock trailer park when I was younger. I mean, I've lived in a mobile home, and at the time, it was called a mobile home. So, actually, it was probably called a trailer. So I am in great support of this going forward, and just asking them to please review it, so we can try and get more affordable housing in our community that this council has said is a priority, and I'm hoping we can get full support for this. Counsel Bordelon.
Thank you. For me, I think it's looking at the impacts. I appreciate the Affordable Housing Plan, but when I ran this by some of the folks that I talked to on a regular basis, I said, "What is your interest?" You know, well, I didn't, I only got this on Thursday, so, you know, it was on the agenda. And, you know, what is your interest? And people, you know, I asked younger people, people in their 20s, you know, my son's friends, and I'm like, "Okay, you know, you're in the military." They're like, I, they weren't interested in purchasing mobile homes. I mean, I mean, I don't know, I would love to get more information, if you could possibly bring it, on what that looks like. Is it something that we really want to expand? I can, I heard with Counsel Russ, the one that used to be down in Cherry Circle, when I used to live in military housing, that was used for military families that were transient, coming in. They could bring their actual mobile home and drop it on the lots there. And I had a few friends that were able to, you know, bring their, their, their home with them. There used to be that one by Chinese Kitchen there, all that, you know, I, I don't know. What is the impact on the community? Do we want to expand them and where? I mean, again, I don't know what that zoning looks like. You know, do we want it on main roads, side roads? You know, what, what's the vision? I don't know. I guess I just need more understanding of what the other stuff in here about, you know, maybe the acreage and, you know, the lot sizes for, you know, subdividing. But the impact of it all, I have to do more research to really understand. I mean, in this short amount of time we have today, for me to send a letter saying I want them to relook at this, and I don't know why I'm having them relook at it, just because of the Affordable Housing Plan, I don't know if it, the folks I spoke to aren't, weren't interested in mobile homes. You know, when I reached out to families in Branford Manor, I said, you know, would you guys, you know, they, they didn't see that as homeownership, you know, necessarily. And it wasn't something that 20- and 30-year-olds were looking for. I'm not saying they're not bad options. Like, down south, when you retire, a lot of people live in those little communities where they have, like, pools and all of that. So I'm just not sure. I just wanted to see if you had any information on that. And what does it do to the environment, the, the whole economic driver and vision? Like, how, I don't know. I'm just, just curious, like...
So, we need housing. We need housing of all types. When I first started working here, I was told, nope, EB employees only want a house on two acres of land with a garage. They can tinker on their vehicles, and they don't want to live in anything else. Okay, that's not what we're seeing, and that's not what we're hearing. One of my colleagues is selling their home in another town and buying an absolutely gorgeous duplex, uh, sorry, mobile home or manufactured home here in Groton. Seeing the pictures of what the inside of it looks like, it's, it's beautiful. It's breathtaking. And it's something that is, it is affordable. It's an option, and it's something that I, I think there was an older stigma around, you know, trailer parks or mobile home parks, and they are manufactured homes, and they're designed and built incredibly well. People of all ages are living in them. And I think I'd encourage you to, you know, go check some of them out in Groton, because, you know, I think they have an, an older kind of stigma still associated with them, until you go and check them out and see what a great community they are, where people know each other, where they talk to each other. And I, that's, that's one housing option. What this person may want, you know, somebody else may not want. So, and that's why, when I talk about, none of these are going to be a silver bullet. If you want to have a affordable, you know, well-integrated community where everyone, you know, people of all ages, races, income levels can, can live, you want to have a lot of housing types. And a lot of suburban communities like us historically have built single-family homes for a long time, and that has been the model. We do have, you know, a fair amount of rental property in town, but I, I think, you know, on a site-by-site basis of, oh, what are the environmental impacts? Are the traffic going to be? All that is dealt with through the, you know, subdivision approval process, through the site plan approval process, analyzing traffic, stormwater, you know, landscaping and visual impacts to the sites around them. But I, I think if we truly want to tackle the affordable house, and it's the housing crisis. Affordable is a part of it, but it's really at all market levels. We have to think outside the box. This is the town's Affordable Housing Plan that we adopted with an Affordable Housing Steering Committee. This was one of the recommendations, and I, I do think it's worth a look.
So my last question, can you currently purchase a quarter-acre land and drop a, a manufactured home on it? Or is this, or are the restrictions only limiting parks right now?
The restrictions really apply more to parks. I mean, if you were to take some type of a manufactured home, if it's a foundation, you'd have to meet building standards of what could be put on a house. I mean, put on, you know, a vacant lot. But even when you start looking at standalone lots, the price of those aren't too cheap either.
But right now, there's no penalty, there's no block, there's no, it is allowable that you can purchase a quarter-acre land and put a manufactured home on it?
I'm not 100% sure, and that's, I'd, I'd need to check the, because that, really, what we're focusing on here is the mobile home parks. I, I don't, I don't have 100% answer for you on that, because I think...
I guess that's a vision. Because if that part's being restricted, I'd like to know that, you know, because I think that, you know, I want to make sure that's allowable. But yes, the stigma with it, I've known many people that live in them. I've been in tons of them all around the country. I think they are another option. I'm just trying to understand what it looks like for here. So my question first would be, knowing, and I can look it up when I get home possibly, can we put a, a manufactured home currently on land when you purchase land? Or is that restricted as well, or is it just parks?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burt.
Deb Jones just, they reached out to me that they are, they're treated as homes.
I'll say yes.
Yeah, okay. So they're not fully used?
No. No, but you still need to meet building code, hook up to, you know, water and septic or sewer and, and those types of things.
Oh, I have a question now. Counsel Jones.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Reynolds, I'm just, I'm going to go back to bullet point two. I'm a little confused on that. So that's the one that says, "Consider adding an open-space subdivision district with smaller lot size requirements." What does open-space subdivision district mean?
It's a, it's a type of process to subdivide land. So versus like, you know, you have a conventional subdivision where if the lot sizes are 40,000 square foot minimum, every lot is 40,000 square foot, an open-space subdivision, you can reduce the lot sizes, the density stays the same, but the overall lot size shrinks, as well as then the length of roadway that you would have to construct. And then there's open space set aside that's part of the excess of the, the lot land area. So right now, you need 20 acres to do an open-space subdivision. It's saying, lower the minimum of, of when that provision, that particular tool, could be used.
So we have two school properties that we're starting to work through the process. One of those is 9.6 acres. The other one is, I think it's 17, but really, the buildable part of that is nine acres. So both of those are under 20 acres.
Correct.
Do those two pieces of property fall into this problem of putting a subdivision? If, if, you know, somewhere we decided we wanted to put a, you know, a subdivision or just houses, do we have a problem with this?
Yes.
So we can't put, on those two pieces of property, we can't put a subdivision as it currently sits?
You couldn't do an open-space subdivision.
So we could do a 40,000 lot, 40,000 lot, 40,000 lot?
For whatever the minimum lot size is.
Whatever the minimum lot is. So that's an acre, I'm 40,000, 40,000 acres.
Yes.
So we couldn't put, what you're saying is, we couldn't put a half-acre lot on those two pieces?
If the minimum was 40,000, we're just picking the hypothetical, hypothetical numbers here. Correct.
So, I just, I guess I just want to be clear, as we sort of move through our own process of these properties, these, we have issues then on trying to, what we put on those properties because of this 20-acre minimum?
Theoretically, yes. I don't, I don't think the highest and best use for those properties is probably going to be an open-space subdivision.
So...
There's other subdivisions?
There, there's a conventional subdivision. But I, you know, I think, is it something that would be beneficial in town? Yes. Does it apply, or is it the best development tool for every property? Possibly not.
So what an open-space subdivision would be, we take a piece of land, we break it up into some lots, and on one end of it, there's what we designate as open space. Is that an open-space subdivision?
Kind of, sort of. Usually, you want to integrate the sub, the open space into it more. It's a nicer design. It's not just, hey, let's squeeze all the lots into this area and then have all the open space on the other side. But as opposed to...
If we didn't put an open space on that property, then we just call it a subdivision, divide it up into, into lots and put houses on it, that's okay?
Generally, yes.
But what we're, according to this, if we wanted to sort of designate part of that as open space, we have issues. Now, can you do, you know, a variance or something like that on this, or is this sort of a locked-in-stone kind of a thing?
You could seek a variance, but in order to get a variance, you have to show that there's a hardship. And if there's other opportunities and ways for you to subdivide it, the intent in the, in the zoning regulations was to have it as a minimum lot size of 20 acres. That could be changed.
Does a park count as open space? Or a playground count as open space?
I'm not following.
If you took, took one of these pieces of property, and you put a playground on it, and you put houses, basically you have a subdivision with open space. You're just designating that open space as a, as a playground. Is that not allowed?
No, I mean, you can do that. So, an open-space subdivision is similar to, you know, sometimes you've heard people talk about like a cluster subdivision or something. It's just, it's a development tool. It, it's, yeah, I, I think we're overcomplicating this particular one.
I mean, it's the 20-acre thing that, that's sort of, you know, and you're talking about sort of lowering it down to five to 10 acres, which gives you a lot more flexibility to do things.
Correct.
But we do sort of have this 20-acre thing going on here.
Yes. And, and that's really just the, that's the minimum that you could do it. So if we wanted to create, allow that as another tool within the toolbox, we just lower that threshold.
Okay. But that's something Planning and Zoning Commission would...
They would have to do.
They would have to do that.
Correct. And, and, you know, just so everyone is aware of how these processes work, you know, because sometimes we'll get questions from people of, "Well, why don't you change that?" Well, we, as the staff, cannot change anything. We are the technical advisors on, you know, matters of planning, zoning, building, economic development, sustainability, resiliency. We talk to the council. We talk to our Planning and Zoning Commission, other boards and commissions. But they're the ones that direct us to write regulations a certain way, and they're the ones that actually vote on it and adopt it.
Okay. More conversations later. All right. Thank you.
Counsel McBride.
I'll make this really quick, because I don't, people are looking at me like, "Why are you raising your hand?"
No, we're not. Stop.
I have to look.
Point of order, that's motivation.
I won't. Just a point of question or clarification myself, because I, I kind of agree with Counselor Pacino on the mobile home. We're, we're talking about, we're not talking about what I consider a true mobile home park, because a true mobile home park is, it's a mobile home that comes and goes. We're talking about manufactured home parks, right?
Yeah.
Because we don't, to my knowledge, we don't have a true mobile home park in Groton. Like an RV park.
An RV park.
Because a mobile home is a mobile home. It moves. So I don't know if you want to change that, but it's, we don't have any mobile parks. I don't know where it came from. Anyway, but my, my real point I wanted to make was, I don't know if you want to insert anything in your, in your memo or your letter regarding SDRs, because we just sent them a memo, right, on holdback on SDRs, and now we're sending them another memo or another letter stating, "Look into this." But a lot of these, the SDRs are going to come into play significantly, I would think, because you could, you could make some of these changes and start to make, you know, they can start to really ruin the SDRs, or implement, well, not ruin, but they can bring forth a lot more SDRs on some of these things, can't they?
Theoretically, but also, you know, one of the recommendations at the very bottom of that list was, you know, looking at short-term rentals and its impact on the housing market. And I do think as we start looking at, you know, some of these solutions, if, and this is something that staff would advise, the Commission anyway, that if, if we're looking to increase density in some of these areas, to do things to make housing more affordable, I think, you know, I've seen some communities starting to put provisions on, hey, that those units there can't be used for SDRs. So I would encourage, because the Planning and Zoning Commission is still considering an STR regulation right now, they've closed their public hearing on it. They really shouldn't be taking any additional testimony on it. I'd encourage you to kind of stay away from, if you're going to send them a letter on affordable housing stuff, I would encourage you to stick to the, kind of the bullets here and not maybe dive into the SDRs, because, and that's something that, as we address this, we'll have that covered.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
Yep.
That's why I didn't include it, because they've already been dealing with it. All right. So, no more comments. So, we're going to go to the votes to send the letter to Planning and Zoning with the first sentence, the six bullet points, respectfully asking Planning and Zoning to review these regulations and update as they see fit per the housing plan. Excuse me?
I'm sorry, accordingly. I, I know, I spoke out.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All abstain for needing more information.
That passes seven to zero to one, with Bordelon abstaining.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
Motion by Bordelon, second by Gajewski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
And I can't see what time it is. What's going on?
9:58.
Thank you. 9:58 PM.
I've already sent in a message to public works to look at it.
Somebody seconded it. There was a fight for it, and that was...